Okay, I'm pushing play. Here we go. Welcome everybody to Spanish Fork Planning Commission meeting. I've asked Commissioner Carden if he'd lead us in the pledge tonight.
Could you please arise? You can pledge after me.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for being here tonight. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 7th. Everybody's had a chance to review those and if there's anyone that would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th meeting.
You got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, next item on our agenda, public hearing for the zone change and preliminary plat for Escala. Mr. Snyder gonna direct us on that?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. We do have the applicant and his team here, ready to answer any questions you might have. So the area we're looking at is highlighted here on the screen. What's being requested is both approval of a zone change as well as a preliminary plat to go hand in hand with that. If we look at the report, it's currently zoned RR and so the request is to an R3 zone. The one catch that's kind of outlined in the staff report is a general plan amendment was made to the area recently. With that, there was a cap that was recommended of eight units to the acre. If you look at the R3 in the Title 15, when it's supplied in other areas of the city with a different general plan designation, it does have a ceiling of 12 units to the acre. But in this location, it's got a medium density general plan designation, hence the... In the staff report, we had quite a lengthy discussion and recommendation from the DRC. And so I don't know if you've had a chance to look through some of the conditions and findings that they recommended for your review. We are working with the applicant through some of the final details for the plans, but what we've got before you tonight is a pretty good overall presentation of the plans. With the report, you should have had some attachments as far as some of the proposed housing product that they have. Just wanted to touch on one thing that came through in the email from Commissioner Mendenhall, who's unfortunately not here tonight. He had some questions on materials. Where this is a master plan development, there is a requirement that certain materials be applied. In the code, it gives the option of concrete, or excuse me, of concrete-based products such as stucco, rock, brick products, but then there's also an option for something like hardy board, where it's a nail-on siding. And so I believe most of the product that you see in the images is based on the hardy board siding. Glancing at the conditions that were recommended to you, the main item, we have, since this report was written, received some updated plans and so we've got, the staff report has the previous plans that were reviewed by the DRC and then in the presentation, we have an updated layout that addresses some of the questions as far as the phasing plan and the northwest corner shared driveway. So the main condition that the DRC passed on was potentially the removal of some of the units to get it below that cap of eight units to the acre.
But what we're seeing is slightly over that.
Slightly over it. If we go to the next slide, Mike. On the right, you'll see landscaping concept plan, kind of showing how the amenities would be laid out through the project. Some of the street trees and other plantings throughout the project. On the left, you can see, let's see if this will work. So here's where they were talking about the DRC with the shared drive here. You can see the applicant's updated layout as far as showing how that was adjusted. Phasing plan line, you can see coming through here. DRC had a recommendation that the single-family homes, most of the amenities and then some of the townhome product would come through in the first phase. And then if we jump, let's see, no. Any questions on what's been presented up to this point?
What's the, two questions. First, what's the exact density that we're looking at? And second question, what's the number of parkings per unit? Where are we at on that?
If we look at the board docs, there's a civil plan page on that. I want to say it's, I don't want to guess, it's just over eight. Nope, not this one. If you pull it up in the board docs, we can zoom in. Hopefully it'll still be legible. It's a PDF instead of an image. There we go. So if you zoom in the top right corner, we're looking at 8.45 units to the acre. And then as far as your parking, so the way the parking is calculated is the single-family homes, you would have at least two. All of them are proposed with a two-car garage and their own private driveway. And then the townhome products, we've got two different parking calculations. So majority of the product, alright, I can't remember the breakdown, but at least half of the product are the front-load townhome and so they have a 20-foot driveway with a two-car garage. So that exceeds the minimum parking. And then the other units, if we zoom out, that are on the alleyway, where those don't provide an individual driveway for each unit. So for instance, these units here, they do have a two-car garage each and then we do 0.5 parking space per unit that has to be within 200 feet. And so we've got some here, we've got some here, and a little bit here in the middle and then a bank of it right here.
So those have a two-car garage, you said?
Yes, I believe all the products have a two-car garage.
Are there any concern with this lot? The house will have to face the street here, right?
It'll face the street.
It'll face this way? This isn't an adjacent property?
That's an existing road.
This is? Okay.
We can jump to the area.
Now that's, that's right.
Has the applicant tied up that corner piece, that triangle piece?
Yeah.
Good. Perfect.
Got a little sliver right here.
You'd be surprised how those little pieces are made.
They're expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the lot right here. Here's 1460 South.
Commissioners, have any questions for staff before we have the applicant come up?
Looks like a lot of units for, I mean, it's the required amount of parking spaces, but worry about visitors.
Did we get an exact, did we get a number? If you just exclude the single-family homes that are on the one edge of the property and we just look at townhomes, do we know what the average comes out to?
We don't. If you're talking about units per acre, we didn't.
Not units per acre, but parking stalls per?
Parking stalls per townhome.
We can look over here. I think it's broken out.
I just, yeah.
Let's see, 64.
Five townhomes.
Do you know the rough breakdown of the types of the front load versus the rear load alley?
It's like 64.
We can do some math over on the side table.
So 2.25, 2.25 stalls per unit.
They were calculated.
But that's including the 10?
Every single unit. So we did an analysis upstairs as far as the distance from the units as well as the total number and it was in compliance with the standards of the city code. But we can run that again down here and tell you exactly what we've got.
Any questions for Brandon? Thank you, Brandon. Have the applicant, anything you guys want to bring up or address?
I need to be back in front of you and not have masks on so we can see each other.
That's nice.
So it feels like I've been doing this for a long time. I've been in front of you a couple of times now. We've worked, we think, as hard as we could to try to work with the neighbors. Just to remind you, I think there's a few things. When we first met with the neighbors, this is a tough site. I've reminded you of that because since, you know, 2010, which is somewhat irrelevant, this was under the master plan, considered mixed use for a reason, smartly for a reason. And that's because we're, as I remind you, we're sandwiched between commercial on the north and storage units on the other side. So we were tasked to try to help you make your job easy by doing what most communities know as a transition plan. A transition plan going from state lots to storage units, or state lots going to a college. And that's why you have mixed-use designations. So we, just to remind you, met several times with the homeowners, both in meetings. I met with them individually. We asked them for all of the things that would help make them happy. The big give we had was the transition, making sure we went single-family to single-family so that they didn't have to have townhomes backing right up to them. That was, we believe, a major important part to make sure this neighborhood felt right. And so we worked hard to make that happen. We didn't want the street to go through, but we were asked by the city to make that happen. So we worked hard on an engineering plan that would slow down traffic, that would kind of deter. We intentionally put the streets the way we did to try to deter people from wanting to go that way. The other thing we tried to do is focus on a quality product. And there wasn't a lot that talked about that, but the hardy board is an upgrade all the way around. We're not doing stucco. You know, stucco would have an appearance of maybe not having the same longevity, but we went ahead and upgraded it, tried to make these fit in. I think the most important thing we did though was, you know, work with all of you to try to come up with the best possible plan for this land. It's a weird shape, it's a little bit unique, and it's got some styles. If you'll remember, I came to you and I said, "Please don't amend the master plan." My preference is as you focus on the application that we'd had in front of you. We had submitted that well in advance of the amendment to the master plan. And I said, "My biggest fear is, we're going to come back and this master plan, which is an advisory document, is going to be amended and we're going to be a few units over." And I don't know if you remember that conversation when we all had it, I hope you do. And I knew this conversation was going to happen. So there's a technical thing, there's two technical things coming up today. I understand staff's position and where they are because once you have the advisory document, you don't want to set precedent having them recommend something that doesn't follow the advisory document. But the other technical thing that happened here that I didn't understand was going to happen is, after the fact, when you do the math, we're only four units over. And that's because we've got 115 units on 14 acres. But there's a technical requirement that staff has to take into consideration, which is an easement. I would argue that this is not your typical easement. So what happens is if you reduce the easement out of the open space, that's where the density goes up to the 8.45. So that turns into eight units. This easement's unique though because it's underground, it's buried, and we were able to design this site specifically to be, so that's usable space. It's not like an overhead power line or, you know, something where you can't do anything with it. Our easement was actually usable. So I would ask that you take that into consideration and perhaps use that as an exception or pull that out when you're making your consideration. You know, we're four units over and that's what I said. You know, it was this uncomfortable thing because the attorney and me wanted to fight like hell and say, "We've had, we've put everybody on notice, mixed use for 10, 12 years. That's what we counted on. That's what we relied on. That's what our neighbors did when they built townhomes, that's our storage units. That's what other neighbors did when we did colleges." We all believed that was going to happen and then the rules changed on us well after we came to you, well after we'd met, well after we'd spent the money. And we've now spent the money. We've gone to engineering. We've now done all this stuff. We've got a really good plan. The other thing, and then I'll finish, I know I'm going on, but we've worked really hard on parking because I know that's an important issue. My thoughts there, because as a developer, is you've got to find a balance between parking and open space. And what we've done tonight at the request of, and I'm going to ask on our, to come up really quick, the DRC had some really good recommendations. They asked us to add more amenities. So we've got a really nice upgraded playground, we've got a half-basketball court, we've got a dog park. And if you start to, we've got plenty of room to put parking in, but you've got to kind of think about the kids and the people that are going to play. We don't want this to feel like a big giant parking lot. We want the open space. And so we can add 50 parking spaces. We have the room. But you're taking away green, grass, open space, play area, and there's got to be a balance. And I, Dave's gone, but I believe we're three times what the city normally requires. We've gone above and beyond to make sure that we have more than enough units and I don't want to misquote, I've been working with Dave on that, but we went above and beyond on the parking to make that happen. So with that, if I can, I just want to have Seth come up really quick. There were three points that the DRC made and we've adjusted for all of those. Or I guess I can do it real quick. The first was this corner. They didn't like the corner, so we went back. We fixed that. We've lost a unit doing that. The second was the amenities, making sure we upgraded the amenities. And so my ask tonight is, we did. We're going to spend more money, we're going to put in more amenities and for that reason, we want the extra four units. What's the other one that I missed?
The phasing.
Yeah, the phasing. You know, they wanted to make sure that we phased it with winter coming and this going underground. They wanted it to be smart so we didn't turn a bunch of mud. So we were really thoughtful. We followed the advice of the city on how we're going to phase it to make sure it's phased correctly and it's going to work appropriately. And I think those were the main things. So we did make all those adjustments as they asked and we're willing to make, you know, the adjustments we need. So with that, I really thank you for your consideration and finally, really excited to be here. This has been a long haul to get to this night, so I'm glad that we're finally here. So I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, I got a quick question for you, just on a comment you made. Why is it that in order to add additional parking, you have to sacrifice green space rather than sacrificing additional units? Why does it have to be the green space?
So you could do that and you could, you know, I'm not going to try to say that we couldn't take out the four or five units and add a few parking places. That is definitely an option. But my ask is that we keep the density, obviously. My ask is, we've been doing this a long time. This plan was put in front, you know, months and months ago with the parking. I believe we've satisfied what staff's asked for based on their calculations and I think we have plenty. By the way, I need to say, all of the parking spaces are oversized. I think one of you asked for that because of the bigger trucks. We did make them oversized so that we can accommodate the bigger trucks. We did all that. So it's just a balance. You're right though. I mean, you could do that. We could do that. My ask is that you don't. My ask is that you work with us and let us have the density because my position is, we were entitled to mixed use, as you all know. It's irrelevant now, but I believe for 10 years, we were entitled to do something a lot more than this. Rather than fight you, rather than come in and really, you know, put our foot down, we tried to work with you and we tried to find a good balance and I think we've done that.
You mentioned you've lost a unit up here. You're at 115, it looks like. What was your very first initial plan that you presented to the city?
120 or 119? Yeah, so we've already cut back. I think we were at 120 in our first plan. So we've gone down five units. Yeah, so if you go back to the calculation, we're 8.14 if you don't count the easement. The easement, the runs, you can see it right there on the roads and stuff like that. And then it's 8.45. So we're literally four units over, so.
On your phasing, when are the amenities going to go in because that phase line cuts right through them?
Yeah, it's a good question.
When will the amenities be going?
I'll defer to the construction guys on that.
Pity.
You can call from the microphone, please.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
You can hear if you don't.
Hi, BJ Ryan with Lennar. Thank you for hearing me. Our plan on the phasing, what our goal is, is basically to break the project into two phases just because we feel by the time we actually get to the ground and get started, we're worried about getting paving down. So by breaking the project down, we have less to get paved and we think it turns over. We're not coming in saying, "Hey, winter's coming. What can we do?" We know that we can get paving down, get closings, get in warranty. The phasing line is flexible. What we initially reacted to, what we thought was the biggest concern, was an interest in getting single-family homes to come online first.
Makes sense.
So I think it's still in flux, but what we heard and what our goal is, is to get the single-family product online first. Our intent is to start installing amenity infrastructure that falls within the phases quickly, i.e. we're not going to wait a year and a half until we've been collecting HOA dues to come up with the funds. We are committing to starting them as quick as we can. We have some hardscape that we can pay to. That is our plan to do it. Even though we are breaking into two plats, our expectation is just to keep on rolling through. So where we do have that phase line, and your question was, how will you manage that? I think the answer is, we're probably going to extend some curb and gutter and some sidewalk and some other things so that we have those, you know, the perimeter to bring our amenities to. Potentially the dog park and the half-court basketball, that probably could, I suspect that will fall into install with the second phase. But the tot lot, tot lot and the pavilion and things and that large triangular area, I feel that we'll bring that in with the first phase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Alright, this is a public hearing, so we're going to move into public hearing. Just a reminder for those that want to get up and speak, try and not repeat anything that anyone prior to you has said. Try and limit your comments, three or four minutes. We will take down your questions and try and address those after we've closed public hearing and everybody's had a chance to speak. So with that, we will move into public hearing. As you address the mic, just state your name for the record if that's alright. So we're now in public hearing.
Hello again. You guys get to see me from time to time. There's a couple families.
Jason, can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Jason Raspson.
Thanks.
There's a couple families that couldn't make it that live right on that property line and so they asked me to come, share their concerns, obviously, because they couldn't make it here tonight.
Which, where out would they be?
So the first home that you come to when you cross Wheatfield.
This one?
Right there.
Okay.
And then the cul-de-sac, one of the properties up on the cul-de-sac. So obviously, the one coming right out of Wheatfield wanted that road closed and that's not an option. I'm sure many of you, being in the planning commission, have spent time around townhomes, whether they're here or in other cities. Every single one of them has parking issues. And I wish the city would take time and even change our current ones because they're counting garage space as parking spaces. And you know people in townhomes don't park their cars in their garage very often. Some do, but a lot of them use them as storage. So I think the city needs to change that. For required parking spaces, it should be driveways and parking stalls and not count the garage for that reason because it causes issues. So their concern obviously is, as soon as you have too many people, visitors, or whoever's coming by, you're not going to allow people to park on Del Monte. So as soon as you get overloaded, where's their first parking spot's going to be? Is right down into our neighborhood. And so no one wants those cars parked in front of their homes and the only way to solve that issue is to require more parking space. Whether that is lowering units or taking out some of the grass, I don't know which is better for the city and obviously for the developer. Not losing units would hurt them financially. But taking that into consideration, because obviously all of those centerpieces do not have even driveways. And so they're going to have parking issues no matter what, even with them overperforming on what's required with the parking stalls. So I would take that under consideration. And I did the math as well as best I could. You guys are looking at the numbers. If you take out the single-family homes, they're a little over 10-ish units per acre when you just look at the townhome density. So that's pretty heavy by way of, even comparing the Del Monte project that we talked before because they were just under 10. They were 9-point-something what they ended up at their project in townhomes per acre. So if you look at just their townhomes, they're actually getting a lot more per acre, just the townhome areas. So that's just something to consider and especially looking at the parking.
My name's Thomas Silva. I live down the street on Stanley, or on Barley. So my house is the corner house, right outside the cul-de-sac, right there. And not that house, it's across the street. That's my house right there. Now, one of the things that I can see, I look at who's here and some of the reasons why people aren't here is kind of, I'll be honest and I'll be blunt. We all feel like we got screwed by our city. We, and it wasn't necessarily a planning commission and I'm not holding you guys, because you guys voted down the Del Monte project and we knew, we brought it up in the city council meeting, that right at the end, if you approve this, what makes it, it's going to make it that much easier to approve the next one? Because now they say, "Well, you've already set a precedence. Why can't you just pass it along?" We all bought our homes for the place that was, the countryside, you could say it was. We didn't care about the cows and the flies that you got from them. That's what we liked about the area. I mean, Spanish Fork, I was just looking at a map just a few minutes ago. I look at this piece of property, it's pretty good-sized. But what's, one thing that I know for Spanish Fork is our fairgrounds. They're awesome. Why is Spanish Fork known for that? We have a country fill. Why? Everybody loves it. It's the people. One thing that I look at, what we're doing here is we're trying to add more homes into a very small area that doesn't necessarily need it. Now, I feel for the developer. I'm in the construction trades and I understand that. But what, why was it okay to dump all the cars into this development on, I can't remember what that road is called.
Del Monte?
Del Monte, yeah. Okay, so why was it okay to dump all the cars on Del Monte? But yet it wasn't in the last one, in the last development that you guys just, that the city council approved? Like what makes the changes? Because my, one of my, our same concerns is the amount of traffic that's going to be on that road, our kids' safety walk to school. You're dumping them all into the, one of the, I don't, who here has kids that go to LA? Who here has kids that go to Riverview? Guess what? Those times are pretty much the same time in the morning and those roads are still busy. You've just, the city's already approved one major catastrophe and it's not going to be considered that until a kid gets killed or hurt because we all know that's what, how things get changed. And I'm sad to say, I'm tired of watching people get hurt before a city opens their eyes and says, "You know, we've already screwed up once. Now we're going to cost a person's life in it?" Because that's what boils down to. Look at the intersection right down the street from this. We finally got a light. Why? Because how many accidents did it take to get to that? It shouldn't be that way. And when, as a community, are people going to start listening to the people that they represent? As well as put their own emotion and things and make places safe until they wait for a tragedy to happen? Is this wonderful? Every time new community or new thing comes in, they say, "Oh, look how beautiful they're going to be." Well, that's awesome. And they've made some great things, but I don't really care. It's my kids and how they get home to, home every day. That's what I care about. That's what I care about. I know that's what, I can see it in your eyes. You agree with me. What's the most important for us? Is it to add another 100 homes to our community? Or is it to get our kids actually home in a safe, safe manner? And dumping another, I don't, you put two cars per household, parking's a big issue, but you put averages two cars per house, that's another 200 cars on that main street. We've already discussed, it's already in the, in the plans, we've already had public hearings, you can look at all the documentation, everything, the same stinking thing. That road cannot handle it. So why are we doing it again? That's what, that's all I got.
Tom, what's your last name?
Silva.
Silva, thank you.
Hi, I'm Amber Pryor. I live on Harvest Lane. So I appreciate what the developer says when, you know, they talk about the compromises that have been made and, and all of that. That's wonderful. My concern is when I hear things like, it's just four more units. I have to ask, is Spanish Fork City one that compromises on principles? Because as homeowners, when we go a little bit too far one way or the other, we have to make those, we have to comply, basically. We have a neighbor just down the road from the development who, her shed is a little bit too wide, and they got to move it. I mean, it's already built, it's already there, they got to put on trailer and haul it away because it's not up to code. And so I guess my point is, you know, I love the compromises, but just because there's some easements or things that have been made to the development, do we say, well, it's just four more acres, or four, sorry, four more units after all? Or do we say, no, sorry, just like every resident of Spanish Fork City do, you have to comply? So that's my point. Thanks.
My name's Jared Haney. I live right in the cul-de-sac, so I will have, what, an entire building right behind my house. It's fine. I'm going to touch on a couple of, a couple of things real quick. Have you guys been to Vineyard during the day, when school's going, when school's out? Have you been there at night to see all the cars that are lined up and down the streets? Because they did, they went above and beyond what the parking spaces were supposed to be. In the condos, in the apartments, in the town homes, above and beyond. Hundreds of cars lined up and down the streets in Vineyard. Where are we going to put those? Are we going to put them in my street? My neighbors' streets? I was nervous to stand up here in front of you with the shirt that I have on right now. It's kind of a catch-22, right? I build town homes for a living. I get both sides. Tom said it right. It's not about, it's not about the town homes. It's about the safety. Del Monte's not big enough to have that much traffic on it. It's not. It wasn't built for that. It can't be widened enough to handle the amount of traffic that's going on, unless you move M-Tech back, unless you move the school back, you move the church building back, because on the other side, you've got a straight slope. So parking is a huge issue. Safety for our kids is a huge issue. Four more units? Yeah, it's an extra 1.5, 1.7 million for the builder. That's nice. But when there's a standard, there's a standard. I hold, I hold all of my trades to a standard. They try to skim it, not going to happen. When I worked for Vineyard City, as the SWIP inspector, SWIP manager, I look at this plan and all I see is a nightmare for SWIP. I get it, we need to grow, the city needs to generate funds, but this isn't the answer. We need to keep it the way we have it. If we could build some nice homes in there, it'd be fantastic. They build, they build nice homes, but this is too many. I've seen it. I've built it. And you know, some days I go home and it just, it makes my heart hurt, because I know that these homes I'm building, these town homes I'm building, these condos I'm building, they're great right now, they're great for the next 10 years. We don't know how many investors are going to be buying these, how many per, per building, how many units per building are going to investors? Because then it goes from two cars to four to six. In 10 years, most of them will be all investors anyway. And then so, it just compounds, the problem as the years go. Is it worth the extra revenue for all the problems that'll, that'll happen in 10 years? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tara Bouchard. I live on Harvest Lane in the cul-de-sac that is also right down from where the single-family homes are. I just want to start by saying, thank you for your service. We definitely appreciate everything you guys do, and this can't be a great job, and it's not even your job, it's, you know, volunteering. So we really do appreciate the time and effort you guys put in, and the time that you put in to the Del Monte project. And so I echo a lot of what's been said as well, and I know you're looking for solutions or options, and so, you know, obviously, the density's too much. Del Monte is not a farm field, like up in the east end of town, or even down in the west. You can expand the roads, like he said, you know, there is a drop-off. Even on the Quail Hollow side, the guardrail across from this doesn't even allow for a sidewalk. I don't know why Quail Hollow wasn't required by the city to put that sidewalk in when it was built, but it's not there, and it won't be able to be there. So again, if you allow people to park on Del Monte, if there's overflow, the safety issues will be huge. And so I really hope you take that into consideration. There is a lot of kids that live in these neighborhoods, and it isn't safe on Del Monte already. It wasn't safe when the city approved the Del Monte town homes. Those intersections just over from there had grades of Ds and Fs, and a new parking or traffic study wasn't required, and it was still approved. So one thing I'd like to suggest is that you require a new traffic study. How will this many homes impact not only Del Monte and the safety of the kids, but the whole surrounding area? You have to look to the future. That's what you guys do. You're planning, you're looking at the master plan. You know that right across the next intersection, Sun Rock has been sold. It will eventually have hundreds of more homes down on Mill Road, where the magical, like, roundabout is being put in. You know, that's not going to fix the traffic issues up here. It may help ALA traffic flow out, but again, Mill Road can't be expanded as it is right now, and you have to look at that. So I really would ask that you take that into consideration, and the city council takes that into consideration, that this density, you know, our neighborhood is not against change, we're not against development, but you have to question when we're more okay with storage units being put in behind our homes than we are with what is trying, you know, to happen. And so I would just request that you really take a look into the density because of the safety and the limitations of what can happen. You know, again, I feel for the developers. I know they're just trying to make money, but everybody's trying to make money, and is it worth the safety of the children, the families, the neighborhood? You know, me and my husband, we built our house ourselves. We are in this neighborhood to stay. It was going to be our forever home, and so we really wanted that to be a nice place. We expected that stuff would get developed, but not to this extent. And I understand if they don't want to put, if you think that quarter-acre homes wouldn't go well along Del Monte, then that's fine, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't put town homes along Del Monte and divide the rest of the acreage up into, say, quarter-acre lots. You know, that's much more viable. And if we're going to stick to this plan, then I would strongly ask that you require driveways, because like they said, a garage should not count as a parking space. So driveways for every unit like they did with Del Monte, and that also that road going into the neighborhood. I mean, there's an in and an out. I don't know why that needs to go down there, really. If a fire truck needs to come in, it could go in and out, and if it can't within that density, like those front town homes, could you fit a fire truck through those? Maybe. Maybe not, not if there was cars parked out in front of the units, because they don't have driveways, they have a sidewalk and then the road. So I just thank you again for your time and hope that you will take these things into consideration. One other thing you did talk about with the Del Monte thing too, is putting parameters within the CCNRs about how long people had to own the town homes, and that they couldn't be rented, and some of those requirements would also be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Tara.
How are you doing? My name's Nate Goff. I live on 1513 South Harvest Lane. In fact, if you wouldn't mind pulling up maybe that Google map. Oh, I thought it was you for some reason.
Oh, yeah.
The Google map of the area. Do you mind pulling that up again?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So maybe zoom out just a smidge if you wouldn't mind. I'm just down on Harvest Lane, right, right there. Yep, 1513, right there. So what's really interesting about this, and I think my neighbors did an amazing job really highlighting some of the complexity and challenges around the traffic and the congestion. If you look at the size of these roads going through Barley Drive and Harvest Lane, you see how beautiful and wide they are? They're really, really large. Those, those roads are residential streets. That's, that's, that's what they're designated as, as per the city of Spanish Fork. Whereas Mill Road on the one side in Del Monte, you can barely see them. Well, you can barely see them, not just because they're older roads, but believe it or not, they're actually roughly six to eight feet less wide. They're really, really narrow. And, you know, one of the, and I don't remember who it was, but the person that did the traffic study, the, the company, you know, said a while back that people will typically take the path of least resistance to plan their route regarding their travel. And if you look at this community, that path of least resistance of these folks, which I'd imagine majority of them will be, going to the freeway so they can commute to work. The path of least resistance due to the congestion of Del Monte and people coming in from Riverway, because they have no other way to get to work themselves, it's already a problem right there, and there's nothing there yet. It's a big problem. Path of least resistance here is going to be for them to take the, the little detour that is going to go through Wheatfield right there. And they're going to cruise down, there's no stop signs at all, right? It's downhill, people fly through there. Yep, you got it. Perfect, thank you very much. Wow, that's awesome. And they're going to shoot out to a stoplight, right? Literally, there's no stop anywhere there. They've got a stop line, it's a right, a stoplight, it's a right-hand turn to the freeway, right? So easy-peasy, lemon, lemon-squeezy, they're out to the freeway, nothing flat. Whereas if they go out to Del Monte, they've got a stoplight, it's a right-hand as well. They go down, guess what? They've got another stoplight right there at Arrowhead. They've got to hit a second one, and then they got to go out to the freeway. So the path of least resistance is without question going to be this area right here, even though they're putting the cute trees and the little zigzag in the road. I just don't think that it's going to really, you know, help detract people from going out to an already extremely congested road on Del Monte. You know, Mill Road is certainly going to be a problem. I would like to see, as some of my neighbors mentioned, them not cut into Wheatfield at all. You know, someone mentioned, offer solutions, right? I think the, the builder said they, they tried to propose that to the city. This, they've got an in and out on Del Monte. I would imagine part of the reason why the city said, eh, we don't really like that idea, is due to the congestion, because they want to feed that traffic out through another way. They want it to go through our neighborhood. Streets are bigger, they can get out of there faster. We're going to also have the other problem from the previous development, from Del Monte, right? We were also concerned about that. It got approved, it's there. We're here now talking about the, the thing we're all worried about, it's setting precedence. Well, guess what? Here we are, right? We're in a bit of a pickle. Not sure exactly what to do about it. Not sure there's anything we can do about it, right? Other than not make an already existing problem worse. I would like to see, you know, the Wheatfield completely capped, cut it off. And you know what? If the city says, sorry, Del Monte can't handle that traffic, reduce your density to the extent to where the city says it can handle that traffic. Our streets can't handle that traffic either. We have a lot of children in this neighborhood. We're going to be getting the, the same traffic from Del Monte, or excuse me, from Del Monte town homes, because they've got about four more detractants before they get out to the freeway if they take the same route that maybe the city believes they would, right? They got a cold, they've got a roundabout on the other way. Who wants to go through that? They're going to zip through our neighborhood. I'd ask you to heavily consider this. This is a big decision. We're here because we're concerned about it. Been at this for about two years. I get it, you've been at it for a number of months, and I appreciate that. And I'm sure your condos and homes are going to be beautiful. I'm sure you do an amazing job. I will say, you haven't knocked on my door. I have not ever spoke to you. I know many of these neighbors have not spoke to you either. I'd welcome you to come talk to me. I'd be more than happy to share my concerns and thoughts with you, face to face, in person. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nate. I know there's a few more of you. We got all night.
But it'd be good if you remembered that there's a three-minute time limit.
My name's Tyson Lewis. I actually live right. Is this weird?
It is. It's a switch all the way up.
Don't look at it.
So I actually live right here. So my house is the only one that doesn't get the single-family homes, I get all the town.
Oh, I'm glad you came. I wondered about you.
Yeah, I get, I get screwed, I get screwed, in essence. But my concern is too, is all the cars, because ultimately, that's where they're going to go to. If you look at my house, my yard, it's shaped like a triangle anyways. So this portion of it is a huge portion of the street, which is a good parking spot. It really is. And I'm concerned that that's where they're going to end up at.
Use your pointer, point to that again.
Mine's right here. So from here to here is all just open street, parking, it's my, it's my side yard. To bring the point of the city regulating, so I have a shed back here in the back, I actually wanted to put it right here, and they kind of put a hold to me on putting it there. So I know that there is rules and regulations that condemn that, because I was wanting to put a roadway to go in and out of that, and I got stopped on that. So, but my concern, my biggest concern is the parking issues. I understand that there's easement, there's a canal that runs through there, but they bought that with the canal, knowing that's there, so I don't feel like that should be a crutch. That's something they knew they were going to have to deal with. But that's my concern, is parking too. One of the other things too, as I was sitting there too, thinking about this, not just our kids, but all the town home kids that are going to be moving in here, single-family, you know, young families go through here, and you add all that traffic on that road, all those kids are going to end on that road too. So you've got the safety of the kids that are moving into those town homes as well, that you need to take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyson.
I guess I'm the only one left. I'm Landon Snyder. I live down there too. The only thing I wanted to bring up that I, that hasn't specifically been brought up in this way, it's still density, but, and I sent an email earlier, maybe you saw it.
We got coffee.
Okay, great. So you can see it. If you were to draw a parallelogram around that property line and move it west to the immediately adjacent property, properties, there are 26 homes on this side. We're proposing 115 homes here, and there's, this has been talked about as a transition area between R12 and R15, I think are the zones. Anyway, that's four times as many homes. That doesn't sound like a transition to me. That sounds like if we picked two blocks of Main Street and said, speed limit's 120 here. It's, so it just seems a little out of whack there. And everyone else has already talked about the parking concerns, the kids who live there. I mean, we're not trying to sound snobbish, we're going to like the people who live there, we understand that, but we don't necessarily need that many of them to live there. I wanted to echo, I mean, what Tom said too. I almost didn't come because I felt like, what's the point? But I remember this was the commission that, that listened last time, so. But I remember this was the commission that listened last time, so that's why I'm here, so I hope you'll listen this time too, thank you.
Thanks Lane.
You can speak up for the hollow if you want.
I think we've all got some pretty good lists. Saying no further comment, we're going to close public hearing. Have you got some things you would like to address at this point? Why don't you, because I'm sure we're going to be asking you some additional questions as well.
Yeah, I have questions for Dave, yeah, more questions for Dave.
Dave, do you have some comments?
Just a few questions.
Mark them off our list as you address them. Is that all right? We'll come to you afterwards.
I really appreciate Mr. Snyder presenting to start with and kind of the overview that he gave, maybe to try to shed a little bit more light on some things that for us are really important relative to the recommendation that we've made. I asked Mike to queue up this, can you go down to page 16 of this? When we talk about density, there are a couple of different things that come into play. We have the law, which is a zone, that's part of what's on your agenda tonight, a proposal to change the zone, and, you know, again, that is the law. We also have the general plan, which, that's what we're seeing here, this isn't the law. This affords certainly some flexibility, this is an advisory document, but inasmuch as this gets reviewed by you and you make a recommendation on it, and then the city council adopts it, this is really what we take as staff as direction, in terms of what we should follow when we review things and analyze whether or not they're consistent with the city's vision for something or not. That being said, you know, as has been described, that there was a change made fairly recently to the general plan designation for this property, it is now designated medium-density residential. Particularly because that was reviewed recently, we as staff take it very seriously. We feel like we've been given very recent direction to follow this general plan designation for this property. And that being said, just maybe to talk a little bit more about what that means, the medium-density residential designation would be appropriate for a few different residential zoning districts. See them there, R16, R18, R19, I'm sorry, we're not talking medium-density, we're talking...
Put on your glasses.
So, medium-density residential, R3, but then three others as well, the three that we have there. Any one of those is really ultimately at the disposal of the city council to consider approving for a development, for a property that has that designation on it. We tend, it seems, always to gravitate towards what? The zone that affords somebody the most density. And that's really what we're talking about tonight. If you can go, and I'm leery to suggest this, I'm concerned that maybe it's not up to date, but to the next page, it looks like it's up to date.
Dave, did you say medium falls within, that R3 falls within medium?
It does, yes. That was an ad that we made just a few years ago, but...
That's the eight per acre.
So let's look at this for a second. Medium-density residential, so that range that we have there, 3.5 to eight units per acre, and I don't want to try to make this sound like it's really technical, it's not, 3.5 units to the acre, for example, that would be if the property was zoned R16. Or I'd rather, I should say maybe R19, one of those other zoning districts that is also consistent with the general plan. Is this making sense?
Yeah.
And then at the other end of the range, eight units to the acre, that would need to be zoned R3, because that's the only zone where the law would allow somebody to approach eight units to the acre. But indeed, it's a range. And when we as staff sit down with somebody and look at a development proposal, this is something that we're cognizant of and we're aware of the law, what the property would have to be zoned in order for any project to be approvable. And those are things that absolutely are part of the process that we go through in getting projects ready to bring to you and then to take them to the city council. But outside of just some of those basic parameters, there also are a lot of other things that we look at. But maybe before I move on to that, again, it's a range. And I certainly don't feel that the city's under any obligation to accommodate somebody on either end of that range. In this particular case, we do have a situation where the property is next to a road that really is intended to be a very, very busy street. It's not far from a state-operated road, Arrowhead Trail, that likewise, really, really busy road. There are storage units being constructed on one side of the project, there's a technical school on the other side of the project, describing all of the things that you already know. And really, those are the things that come to influence us staff more than anything else when we look at what makes sense, you know, again, given the parameters that we have. And that's why we've recommended that a project be approved with townhomes here. We also acknowledge that this is next to a neighborhood that has a different type of housing. And for that reason, we're glad that the applicants put forth a design that we think, at least to some extent, takes that into account, given that they've proposed to construct single-family homes next to that neighborhood. I think it's entirely up for you to decide if that is, you know, has it been mentioned, maybe an appropriate transition between the neighborhood to the west and what these folks want to do. In our view as staff, we think that is. I think that's a very good addition and a good approach to take in terms of trying to, you know, maybe provide a certain level of comfortability for the people that live next door to the west. But at the same time, busy road, a couple of very distinct land uses, bookending the property on either side, you know, those are reasons that we think that this does probably justify a little bit higher density than what we have, for example, in the neighborhood to the west, hence the townhomes. Now that being said, to be really, really clear, and before I say this, I really appreciate the chance we've had to work with Lenar and Mr. Winterton, I think they've made an effort to be very accommodating of a lot of different things that we've asked of them that won't get discussed tonight. They really have been. But when it comes to eight units to the acre and where we're at on that, we couldn't be farther apart. It's a simple thing, you know, whether it's seven units over the limit, four, however you look at it, frankly, as staff, you know, some of those things become irrelevant to us. Again, eight's the max in our view. We don't think the project necessarily is any better at seven and a half units to the acre than it would be at six or five, really. We're respectful of the idea that if a developer can design a project that we think would not impact anybody adversely and be a good addition to a neighborhood and a community, if they can get that up, you know, towards the maximum end of a range like what we have there, I think our attitude as staff would be, why not? But certainly, we would not at all recommend that ultimately the city council approve anything that exceeds eight units to the acre because of how this property falls on the general plan. In fact, when it comes to things like parking and meeting those requirements, let me mention this as well. The word minimum, I think, has a lot of meaning. We talk about parking requirements, and, you know, again, I appreciate what Brandon mentioned earlier, the project does meet our parking requirements. But it is a minimum. And part of the reason that we have our approval processes set up the way that we do is to give you and the city council a lot of discretion to decide if indeed that's appropriate for one particular project or another. But as you're well aware, it's become very customary for those minimums to be exceeded with what people put forth, that indeed is the case with what's proposed now. But as Mr. Rasmussen said, and we have validated this by looking at every townhome project that we have in the city. Our minimum requirement, which is greater than most communities in Utah County, is not sufficient, we acknowledge that, we know that's the case. And I just mentioned that, you know, in terms of, first of all, helping you hopefully understand that you can require whatever you think's appropriate with whatever recommendation that you make on parking, we as staff acknowledge that the minimum does not hold water, and for that reason, we haven't, you know, recommended that a project be approved at that minimum for quite some time. And maybe just one last thought, and I don't like doing this, we don't want to do it as staff, we have that sketch around that we talked about.
Yes.
Just to be a little bit more specific, maybe by way of food for thought, and we do not like doing this, but, you know, understanding that we were going to be seeing things differently than the applicant tonight, this is our concern as staff when it comes to there being too many homes on the site, that's our biggest concern. And it's our biggest concern, and maybe a different image will help us understand why a little bit better, this gets a little bit messy, trying to illustrate here where we think units should be dropped for a total of nine fewer units than what's been proposed right now.
The red would remain, the ones that are not colored would be the ones that would drop.
The red is intended to be a footprint, for example, yeah, if that makes sense.
Red stays.
And if maybe we can go back to a cleaner image of that particular middle.
The red stays, like on the bottom, there's minus one, there will be one, minus or three.
Something like that, yeah.
Take out this unit but keep the others.
And particularly right here, I think what's been expressed in terms of there being a parking concern, it really becomes clear, and I'll give Mr. Clark credit for bringing this up several times, these units here, again, even though the off-street parking that's provided throughout the project, it exceeds the number of spaces that we'd require. I think if you look at it most conservatively, they exceed the requirement by 27 spaces for 115, you know, proposed homes, that's not a small amount, but, again, no driveways over here, we know that people indeed do use garages as storage. So the idea that there needs to be more parking like this in proximity to these homes here, I think is really significant. That's partly why we would suggest that there be no more than 16 homes in this row here and 16 homes in this row here, so you could do more of this in between those homes, which I think then has another benefit as well. Right now, you've got a fairly solid wall of homes along Del Monte Road, breaking those up into maybe four-unit buildings at the most, instead of what we're seeing there, to not only afford parking on the backside of the units, but also to provide a break on the front side, I think that's a big deal. We've made some other suggestions just to try to maybe think about how to result in a feel for the project that would be less congested. Said that really poorly, I apologize. With the idea that there are some areas in the project where, again, you've got long banks of townhomes with very little break-in-between, you know, dropping a unit, just helps kind of spread things out a little bit. Really, I think that's important right here, for example, where you've got, you know, parking, open space, open space amenities the most likely in each area, and you've got buildings that are so tight, corner to corner there. Dropping a unit on either this bank or that bank would help that, in my view, to make it feel more open, to be more open, more visible, to do a lot of different things that I think makes sense. We do not like to pick projects apart like I just did. But, you know, again, I absolutely think, first of all, that that eight-unit-to-the-acre, eight-unit-to-the-acre number really is a big deal. And whether they end up at eight units to the acre, or seven, or six, or whatever, I don't think that's necessarily the city's, I would say that again differently, I don't think the city's obligated at all to get them to a particular number, it's much more, we have the ceiling, they work below that, but any concerns that are out there relative to parking, or design, or that type of a thing, we don't, we don't design projects, maybe talking about some suggestions with what I just said. And, again, Mr. Winterton and Lenar, they've been great to work with, this particular detail of everything is kind of frustrating for us as well, because I, you know, townhome projects have not been approved in the city at a maximum allowable density before. This would be talking about not only hitting the max, but going above it, it's frustrating.
Dave, I got a question for you. So, we're at 8.4 currently with your adjustment, with city's recommended adjustments, or what you went through, minus the nine, what does that put it at?
Something less than eight, we're probably still fairly close to eight.
If it goes down four, then it meets the, right?
And, you know, I would say that those are critical changes to make, you know, again, for the parking reason that I mentioned, and particularly in the middle there, where those buildings are supposed to be as close together as they are. You have a lot of latitude relative to what you might suggest and recommend.
Dave, while you're there, could you, number of the residents brought up Wheatfield Road, Wheatfield Lane punching through into their neighborhood?
Yeah.
And that being a city requirement, the city asked a developer to do that, could you maybe explain the reasons for that?
We, I'll start, I'll let Mr. Clark add where I leave off.
That's good, because I have a couple of questions.
I guess the issue with that really is that, you know, we're talking obviously about a couple of different types of housing here, but yet it's one neighborhood. I think that there will be people on either side of the subdivision lines there that are going to go to maybe visit people and so forth, and different things like that. Having good local street neighborhood connectivity is really, really important. We have other parts of the community where that doesn't exist, where, for example, like with Old Mill Estates, somebody didn't stub a street to the adjoining property to plan for that future development, like was done when Old Mill Estates was developed, right? We have a stub street, this was contemplated 10 years ago. It's because we've had bad experiences elsewhere in the community, as have lots of other communities when you don't do that type of a thing. Having somebody go from this project, for example, out to Del Monte Road, to Arrowhead Trail, to Mill Road, back to get into Old Mill Estates for whatever reason ever, is an absolute disaster that we'd be nuts to try to accommodate, or vice versa. So that type of connectivity at the local level is critical, I think we've learned our lesson. And inasmuch as that's the case, we've done something that I think really from a traffic management standpoint is kind of silly, but indeed, it's been done to try to discourage any type of cut-through traffic from going either from Del Monte Road to Old Mill Estates, or from Mill Road to this project by including a really, really significant traffic calming island there with that road connection, just to make it as unappealing of a route as somebody might find for cut-through traffic, but this project in this area has been studied from a traffic management standpoint more than any other part of the community. And that is not necessary, it's proposed, really at the request of staff, and this is one of those things that I certainly appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with us on, you know, really as an effort to try to provide a neighborhood with some comfort in terms of, you know, following through on plans that were made a long time ago to have that local street connection made.
Thanks Dave. Give you a few minutes.
Thank you. First, I want to distinguish one thing, mostly for the people in the audience, because I haven't met everybody here, I don't represent the developer, and I just want everybody to know that, I actually represent the family. This is our family property. And just to remind you, we've owned it since 1964, which I think means something, it's 14 acres, and we've owned it for a long, long, long time. Over the years, the city has been very gracious to come to us each time something was done. And, so I think it's important for the people here to know, we were asked, are you okay with all these homes coming in next to you? And we worked with the city at the time, so, you know, for what it's worth, first in time, I'm sensitive, I understand, but a lot of these people moved in four or five years ago, we've been here since 1964, and we're the last one standing, and the city's plan was published and put on the record in 2010, long times before all these people moved in. And that's smart planning by government. We do that for a reason, we put public documents out there to put every... We put public documents out there to put everybody on notice, so that when they're purchasing homes, they can see what the city's planning on doing with something, they can make a decision, and at that time, they can decide what they want to live next to. It's a little bit, you know, I don't, I'm only one voice, I can't, but I represent 14 acres. So if this were to develop, I represent 114 voices technically. And so that, that's kind of the first point. I think that the second, more important point is staff has worked really hard, and we have all worked really hard, and I think there's a compromise here that, that we could find, and that's kind of what I want to bring up tonight. If you do the simple math, this is 14 acres. If you take 14 times 8, that's 112. And, and so my compromise is you actually give us, we, we do, as Dave recommended, and we go for, we, we stick to the hard eight per acre, but you go eight times, or excuse me, eight times 14 for the 112. There's a very technical rule we're getting caught up in, and I would argue as a family, we've been caught up in two technical rules. Changing the master plan long after we came to you, kind of at the last end, that was technical, and as Dave pointed out, it's only advisory. If we get R3 zoning, which is allowed under medium density, we can go up to 12 units to the acre. So this advisory document that happened at the very, very last minute, that's a technical issue. It's advisory, it's not law, okay? And so my, my compromise would be, recognize this as 14 acres, give us our eight units to the acre. That way, you're sticking to the letter of the law, as Dave asked you to do. And the technical issue is this, they're extracting the open space that we're utilizing. And I think that's where good land planning should take this into account. But the technical rule that Dave references is, as planners, they have to deduct easements. But in a situation like this, our easement is becoming usable open space, and it's been incorporated into our plan, and it's not reducing anything. So it's very unfair to punish us for usable land that's being incorporated because it's underground. You know, somebody said, well, you bought the property. Well, we've had this, again, since 1964, so that's it. And then just one last point, if you could zoom in for me up on the right-hand corner on the stats, pull all that up really, really big.
A second.
Because it's impossible to see, right up there on the right-hand side where all the calculations are at. So the city does have code requirements, and we talk about living by the code. So now, as a, as an owner of land, I would ask you to live by your code. Your code says that you calculate parking requirements based on your code. Your code requires us to have 259 parking spots. That's what your law says. That's what we're required as, as landowners to accommodate by your code, by what you've asked. We've got, right now, 394 parking spots in this development. We're 135 parking spots higher than your code, and we did that voluntarily. So I'm not asking, so, so everybody says we need to live by the law, we need to live by what the hard documents say. I'm saying, okay, let's do that. Let's, let's live by the law. The law says, by Spanish for code, we're required to have 259. We've got 394, completely voluntarily, 135 more parking spots than what your law requires. And so that's, I think, a really important point, coupled with, we want to live by the law, we own 14 acres of usable land, give us the eight units, we'll reduce the three, that's my ask, we'll do exactly as Dave asks, and even if we do four, we'll go find the parking spots. He's right. If we work in that lane, and we work together, and we reduce it by four, we open that up, we add the additional parking, we're still now going to be 135 plus, call it another 15. We're now 150 spots over what the law requires. So that's my, my ask, and, and again, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of the family here. I'm not speaking on behalf of the developer. And since we've been here for so long, I think our voice should be heard, and I think it's, it's only fair, because we were here first, so. I don't know if you have any questions or...
Possibly.
Oh, yeah, I don't, all right, I don't.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see what comes up. Thank you.
One of the major concerns was that traffic on Del Monte.
Yeah, Mike, I think we've got a million questions for you.
We got traffic questions.
You ready?
Are you surprised?
I think we're gonna exceed the timer.
Let's talk about, if you could bring up the aerial, first of all, I've got a couple of questions on one of them. Sorry, the Google, Google Maps aerial of the neighbors. So let's talk about path of least resistance. I'm not a traffic expert, I'm not an engineer, that's why we, that's why the city hires you, that's why we go to you for, for those answers, right?
Yeah.
But path of least resistance, first of all, they mentioned, I guess, apparently there are no, no stop signs from, from this area down to here. What's the likelihood, if this is to connect, that there would be a stop sign right here? I don't know if there is one right here or not.
There is one there.
There is one there. What's the likelihood that a stop sign could be added right here?
Oh, we can add one. Typically, at T intersections, we don't add them unless there's a, a need that arrives. Like, it's, it's driven one. What's that?
Somebody gets hurt.
No, no. If you want to ask a question, you might turn that in, you can ask second period. Typically, at T intersections, we don't, unless one of the lanes is a pretty main road, but typically, right-of-way rule is you would stop at, at the T, right, if you're approaching from, from wheat field, right? You wouldn't think you had the right-of-way as a car comes through. So typically, we don't, but obviously, if you drive around town, they are.
So it is possible, you could add one to try and reduce traffic flow, you could put a stop sign in. Is that a good enough excuse to, to add a stop sign?
Yeah.
Or better question is, would it make a difference?
Most of it's a rollover, to be honest. A lot of times, you'll then see yield signs just saying, hey, by the way, if you proceed forward, you're gonna, you know, cross traffic, doesn't stop that idea. So typically, the, the cut-through traffic is, is an issue when, think about a detour sign, right? You're driving on Fourth North, and it says detour, and you're like, ah, I'm put out, I gotta go all the way around. That's when really it's a huge safety issue, because the, there's a lot more traffic on the road that typically isn't, right, for a short amount of time, like, all of a sudden is there, right? And then people are like, I gotta make up for lost time, I'm gonna blow through this. And so, I mean, I find myself doing it, right? I'm going faster, because I'm like, I gotta get around this block, but I gotta drive three-block lengths to get back. So typically, the cut-through is something along those lines, something that's not expected, where people feel like they have to make up a loss of time. Obviously, less cars on this road is, is ideal, right? If we could have no cars come from here through, that's ideal as far as, as cut-through, right? Less cars driving in front of your house, less, less chance your kids will be hit, right? But if it's something that is everyday, and that's the route they pick to choose, typically, data shows it's not a, I'm gonna bust through as fast as I can, because it really is just then their way to work, where they go, if they're gonna go fast, they'll go fast either way. But it's not something where they anticipate giving them a certain amount of time where now they can't, like a detour. So, yeah, you can ask stop sign. One thing we look at is number of turns, and do they feel like they're backtracking? So if they come down this road, they're not gonna go this way, even though it's probably the same distance, maybe a hair longer, but it feels like they're driving away from the It's hard to know, human behavior is so hard to predict. But I would, this is my opinion, if, once the, whatever your storage units are in, that road will be winding when this development goes, it'll be widened, it'll be wide enough to have, and we're not, we're not parking on Del Monte, it'll have two lanes plus a center lane, as far as traffic loading, right? You'll have some turn lanes there, and that'll extend all the way through M-Tech, all the way down through the Del Monte townhomes. So basically, the road will be finished with, with this development. And so I don't think, you will have some people coming out here, and this, this obviously is something we don't like either, but I think it'll improve way above what it is today. You would think everyone would go to Del Monte from this subdivision to, it'd be a one-turn out, and you're at the, the highway, versus if you're here, you have to go one, two, three, four turns to get to this point, assuming they want to go to the freeway versus into, and this way. Traffic study that we, we commissioned, again, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but talking to him, that was something that, what did raise a big concern for him. Obviously, it does for these, these folks, and I, I get it, I live right next to my mom in high school, and I get the 11:30 racetrack in front of my house, and his kids race to lunch, and I don't like it either. I don't want my kids out at all in that timeframe for that exact reason. I get, scares me to death they're gonna get hit. But instead of, again, making this a worse way through, I'd say focus on the fact that will be improved and better on Del Monte and the signal. And back, Dave was talking about the median, for every other reason, it's, it's not a great design, not a great way to do it. It will probably help as a thing, they think, hey, I don't want to drive through that, I have to go slow, I'll go out this way, I don't know if it'll work for everyone, but from a traffic standpoint, the engineer said that's, if you guys want it, it may help a little.
Did the, did the traffic study that we reviewed for Del Monte, didn't it have this property?
Yeah, they did both for the same time.
At that time?
Yeah. There's a team you study in, the Del Monte study, by Hales Engineering.
Did we have any, it was brought up, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but it was brought, there were several, like, Ds and Fs in the ratings, and then I know that showed what it was currently, and then what it was going to go to once Del Monte was developed. Any concerns out of that report? Do we have that report we can look at?
Mike can look for it, but I don't remember there being a one that was finished.
I remember, I remember once Del Monte and the roundabouts were in it, that everything was into the, the minimum timeframe as it was going through, as traffic moved through.
Sorry, I remember, I, I can look it up as well while we're chatting.
While you're looking it up, this intersection right here, you said three lanes in the middle, what's it gonna look like at the intersection? I'm wondering if that's wide enough to include a left lane, a straight lane, because once Sun Rock gets built, and if they do a gas station here, there's a likelihood that you could get more people going straight, a left straight and a right.
Like, look at the, I can't remember exactly how the structure is gonna...
Then the other...
...dictate it, and so as wide as we have there, UDOT had to approve it.
Then the other question is probably too late for this because of the storage units, and I'm sure it's another UDOT question, but would it have been possible, or is it still possible, to do a right-hand merge lane that runs along the property, so you don't have to really even slow down and stop? You could turn and yield, get into that merge lane, and then get onto Arrowhead.
But there's a light there, right?
There is a light currently, but there, I'm thinking of, if you know, in university, in Orem, where the mall is, you can, if you're going south on State, you can turn right. There's a yield sign, even though there's a light, there's a yield sign, and you can merge, get into the merge lane, and keep going a lot quicker rather than have to stop and wait.
Isn't that why by Chappies also?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah. We set you that way.
One of those, yeah, we'd have to basically buy that land from...
Storage unit.
I'm checking their site. They, they're widening that a lot.
Are they widening it?
They are.
The road, they're widening the road?
To do this specific thing, that's not part of what UDOT approved.
But they would be able to have a right turn and a middle and a left.
How difficult this stage in the game, would it be to approach UDOT and try and get something like that put in?
This would be a better time than six months from now.
Yes. I know they're, they're not, they haven't done any of the road yet there, they're still putting the footprint for the storage unit. I know we required them to do a buffer for landscaping, so I'd be curious to know what, and obviously, we should have talked about this a long time ago, but didn't think about it until now. I know you've got probably a million lined up, Mike. I've got another one for you when you get to it, and that's...
Last three, oh, yeah.
That's the width, width of these roads compared to what these will be when they're finished.
These are 29 feet of asphalt, probably, I'd have to measure, the standard now is 29, it might be 32, I can't remember which this one was held to. This would be 38 feet of asphalt. So enough room for that center turn lane is essentially the difference.
But no shoulder? She said no parking, right?
Right.
Well, no parking, but...
Couple reasons. One, we don't want people parking on a road that's meant to carry people, AV kind of thing.
Right.
Towards openly closed, it just, anyway. The other one is to try that turn thing.
There's sidewalk currently that runs all the way around the east side?
Not on the hillside.
Not on the hillside, there's not, will there be?
No.
But, but the sidewalk will be on the other side.
The trail will be on the side.
Yeah, and it'll be a trail, right?
And I also...
Is it, is it right here where it ties in? There is a sidewalk right here, right? Is that what I'm seeing?
I honestly couldn't tell you this story.
It's, it's when you cross at where M-Tech is, the sidewalk.
That's where the sidewalk starts.
You're crossing it on that side, because they could build it down across the Del Monte towns, whenever that sidewalk's put in. But this side would be winding with the trail and everything, and I'd be intent for pedestrians to use that side.
Well, this is either one, so, yeah, you said the two, that was three, one of these connections actually will be.
Will be.
It will be what, 38?
38.
And our roads are 39.
No, I have to make sure.
29.
We're at some, at some point, it's about, America is yours or after yours, or maybe either way. No, it's too small, something like that.
32?
It's a 32.
Yes, a 32, I remember, right, it's one of the 32s. Yeah. What are, what's the width of the other ones currently?
Oh, currently? Not very big, and not very nice-looking either.
Because they're not gonna be wide until when?
It's 28 now, so we have another 11 feet.
It'd be widened only with development, like this, the other one's like... But after, or like before? Uh, before anybody occupies a home there, there.
They have to bond before they start moving their, so then even if they bail, you have the money to finish the programs.
One question, I'll say, go ahead. That's a long list. We're probably not done.
So, how about storage? I apologize if I missed any question, I think I remember, but there's a striking one somewhere around here. I actually hope to, just trying to be ready here. This is a little more clear. So, yeah, they have a right turn pocket here, you see that, this, the curve moves?
Yep. So that's the plan?
You can see, if you compare the radius on that corner.
Yep.
Put the one across the way, just how much bigger it is. That's where I wonder...
Do we...
How much effort it would take really to...
Make it a little bit more, yeah. Yeah, it's already almost there, it looks like, so maybe just a little bit more. Tell them they can...
On Arrowhead?
Yeah, well, on Del Monte to Arrowhead, yeah, just that turn right there.
My guess is...
Bring more traffic.
I'm not trying to be counter, but my guess is that UDOT's gonna say...
No.
Or it'll, or it'll take years to get it through.
But it's nice to know that there's allowance for a right turn lane there.
Yeah, that, we have some minimum requirements, but most of ours, and it goes with UDOT, is you do what they tell you to do, and then we'll throw a red flag if we think we could push UDOT to do something better. But usually, UDOT's way more conservative than we, they do stuff we don't even think about, on the conservative side.
Mike, while you're here, the, the trail there extends up along Del Monte, that'll continue through this development, I, yes.
This is the edge of the, the T unit? Yeah.
I'll just continue on up.
So will that connect like to the River Trail, or...
Yeah, I suppose the trail's fine, but that's the idea, so this'll connect down the main street, and then I'll go to the River Trail.
I have a question about parking.
Yeah, sorry, your last question.
No, it's okay, I know it was the right time anyway. Puig City, like, our, our strip is level by seven feet, and all their neighborhood streets are red, you can't park on the street unless you have a permit, and they give homeowners permits. Does the city ever do that? Would that be an appropriate situation, particularly for those that are wheat-filled, or that are really close to the town development? So I know it's inconvenient as a homeowner to have to be like, okay, mom, here's your parking permit, let's go put it in your dashboard, so you don't have to ticket, but could that work, does it happen anywhere in the city, and could that work here as a possible solution to the concern of the parking?
We've talked about that. We don't have, we haven't done that anyplace yet. This might be a good example to use, just thinking theoretically, that if indeed there was an overflow parking issue into an adjacent neighborhood like yours, that's typically the impetus for things like that, right? And some of those programs are really, really easy to administer. We talked about it a little bit relative to the emergency, I don't know if they still have the same issues that they had a few years ago, but it's really the same thing. Overflow parking in an adjacent neighborhood... Overflow parking in an adjacent neighborhood and you can do a bunch of different things with permitting, but it doesn't make it difficult necessarily with homeowners that live in the neighborhood, like just red curbing it flat out. I'm not a big fan of that. Because if I live in the neighborhood, I won't be able to rent a house if I wanted to, but just coming up with a permitting program, a lot for neighborhood residents to park in the neighborhood, not other people. I don't at all want to build a hope with what I'm saying. We haven't done it, we've talked about it. There are models out there that I think work really well. So that's.
Uh, no, uh, yes.
Right. Very political answer.
Well, it's, that's a matter of fact.
Michael, another question for you. Do you, in one of our meetings, I don't know how long ago, you showed traffic accident numbers, counts?
Yeah.
Do you happen to have those for Old Mill and Arrowhead and Del Monte and Arrowhead?
Another one I'd be curious, I hope it doesn't become a problem. The thought is, I, I guess people surprise me how far they are not willing to walk to things. So I think they'd almost like double park out into over the sidewalk or even walking 100 feet. People are lazy, I'm lazy. So I hope it's not a problem. I, I hope it is not something that they drive and come and look at that. Yeah, like if, say you had a teenager that lived at this house, the garage is full of stuff or this townhome, parents are parked in the driveway, it's like, where am I going to park? I think he'll find any possible way to park, even in his neighbor's driveway, before he parks down the road around the corner. I have two siblings in high school and they, they'll park illegally before they walk that far. But again, he would be able to perfect.
Is on-street parking going to be allowed?
Yeah, it's sort of the same width as your streets. Of course, there wouldn't be, it's too narrow. Again, can't stop someone unless you red curve and enforce it, but the idea is this is a small entry type thing, but this would be like your streets, you park.
And for DeLiza as well?
Oh, yeah, it's a way. Yeah, that one's in, yeah, it's only like 20, some 22 feet, something between, 24 feet between the units.
That's not a public street there. So that and the other alley is, yeah, they would be different.
When you say it's not a public street, that means you're not. Correct.
They hire the HOA to plow.
If, if I'm in my driveway and I can't get out because there's snow here, I'd imagine the HOA person can hear about it loud and clear and double the plow. You're thinking they went fully into their house if it's, and so then they park somewhere else.
Can I ask a question just on the development by the smaller Walmart?
Yeah.
How wide comparative to that, because they have a fence and a townhome right next to their, how wide is that comparative to this width? Does that, you understand, their garages are in the back.
You're talking like right here?
Right there versus there, because that bent up to the little ones and you can barely pull a car in. So what is the width on these ones comparative?
Compared to the ridge? Is that a development?
Yeah, I said this, it's the one where I answered the roundabout, straight in as a little thing, because you can't pull into your garage and these guys don't have parking, so can they actually still pull into their garage?
So we've had a few of these, yeah, we've had a few of these, we just had one just barely with D R Horton, right? So what adjustments did they make? What width did we decide was good for them as far as to be able to get in?
There's a long answer.
And, and do these, are they any narrower than what D R Horton's doing in this one?
So we go 25 feet on the width and then they have their driveway, which we say is three to five feet, so you don't parallel park your Fiat in it kind of thing, which we saw a lot. So yeah, 25 feet.
So you're about 30.
Yeah.
So you said this was how long, 20 what?
Oh, I, I'd have to look at what they actually drew. How wide are they? I don't know if we have.
How wide are those? I think they're 26.
Our standard would be 25 plus three, so however wide that.
But you don't have a three on this. So this is just 25.
It does.
It doesn't show up real well, because I think that's part of the footprint, it's part of it as well. There is that.
Use this here, maybe? I'm looking at you guys.
I think we, I can say this and you can verify it. When you go to our townhomes on our private roads, there is an apartment, there is an old line street where it's clearly marked. You end up once a month having a new person who goes and turns the car. So as far as that concern, there is one for vehicles to pull in and pull out as a two-man parking. So you will pull that old street or do you?
And it will be exactly this.
In the alleyways?
On private roads.
On the private roads.
And if you imagine this would then have a little driveway into the unit and then in between each unit, you'd have a commission unit or garbage can or whatever in that space.
I have another question for you.
They write, so they, my brother lived in one just like this, he'd take and said, okay, what makes sense to be able to pull in and then return in? Now, if you have a long bed F-350, it's a real different story not to, says they're in there, but.
Okay. Oh, I have a question. Are these units going to have basements?
Yes, they will.
Oh, they will, okay. Because that was one issue with the other developer was the intent is for people to park in their garages and the basements are more meant to be, if you have stuff to store, that we've provided building space for, space in the building for you to store your stuff.
There are full basements and, and, and people aren't correct that there will be some people that will, will apologize for something in the garage. I mean, we just a community, you know, but things like that, and that is true. One product that has the driveways are controlling of, of parking in this, in the streets. I, I'm hearing these concerns and one of the concerns I'm picking up, I think, is that people feel that parking or vehicles from this community are going to migrate into their community. And I can tell you from what I see in our communities.
That's not the trend that you see in your communities.
Where's your opinion, like the transference transport issue? Is it they fill up where they need to park?
Would you mind coming to the microphone because we're broadcasting?
So again, my, I don't see what, what sounds like the fear or the, or the concern. I don't see that. I don't see that happening. We do have a lot of, we do have a lot of parking and, and as you said, the basements, there's your place to store everything. Over by 100 and something parking stalls, I think, I think we really are working hard and I don't need to come up here and, and try and sell something that I don't believe in, because I'm a person too. And, you know, we've seen people wearing their builder shirt. We are all people, we get it. We don't have to sell something and then find out that you were, you were sold bad goods. And, and I hear, I hear these concerns and Del Monte, we've got a 20-foot wide easement in front of the houses. That gets, that gets the kids away from the street. We've got the large trail system. That again gives the ability for more people to be on the trail system and walking and be away from, from the vehicular traffic. We're going to widen the street. There's a lot of things that are good about what we're doing and, and we're trying to strike a balance between what, what we're wishing for, what the city is, is wishing for and, and what, and what the homeowners are working, are wishing for. I heard a comment about rental units. Again, we're people too. We have CCNRs. We control the amount of renters that we have. We have a community where we don't even sell to, to people with the intent of rent, because we don't need to. We, we have a product that people want. Our product will bring a level of affordability compared to maybe an R6 or something. Yes, we are asking for density, but that density helps us bring amenities, it helps us bring, I'm not sure, anything is really affordable right now, but it brings a product that someone can buy that maybe wouldn't be able to buy in a different community. So, and, and they're not starter homes. The, our siding wrap, we don't do the three-sided succo. We do the full hardy board. It, it softens the looks. We, it, we have different colors, we have different palettes, so I really, I feel that the density that is being asked for, well, I agree, it is, it is more than, than what the city says it should be, but we're, we're also all compromising as a team to, to make the best of both worlds. The single-family homes that are a buffer from, from what will be our neighbors, that's a good transition up. We don't have the CCNRs, but you know, we have ways to control our people, we have ways to calm our traffic. We are bringing in a trail system, we are widening the road, we're bringing, we're bringing, I think we're bringing a lot of value. We're, I think we're checking a lot of boxes and I don't know that we're checking all of them perfectly, but I think we, we are really working hard to, to strike that balance where we deliver a quality product, we deliver it to the community, we deliver amenity to our community, we provide transitions from, from one neighborhood to another neighborhood and, and I think this, and I think we're going to do a good job of it. And I, and I think ultimately, while I hear the, the concerns about, about, about the traffic spilling over, I think, I think the island on Wheatfield, it will be an inconvenience for people to, to go that way. That's, that's just not easy. It's going to be, I believe it's going to be quicker for people to go to Del Monte. So they're going to go to Del Monte, out to Arrowhead, and if the goal was get to Miller, I think in today's world where everybody's busy running around trying to get their kids to somewhere or do something, that's going to be the quickest route out of our community. Will there, will there be someone that goes through the existing community? Yes. But I feel that, I feel that the, the way Wheatfield is structured, I don't think it's an attractive or easy way to get out.
Thank you.
Well, you got here, can I ask you a few questions? So when ours is the builder, are you also going to be operating the HOA? Are you going to be?
Yes, yes, we will establish the HOA and we will, and we will control it until it's the appropriate time to turn it over.
And in your plans and your, the plans that were submitted in the docs, it shows an unfinished future basement. Will there be options for people to build that out or will it be, will it just be an unfinished basement?
We do, we do provide an unfinished basement. We provide, I'll say, a roadmap to finish the basement, i.e. where we place our bearing walls. We do put in some equal window well, so we are definitely giving the homeowner the option should they.
But it'd be a, it'd be a homeowner doing it afterwards?
Yes.
You won't do any basements yourselves?
We, Lennar does not offer a finished basement as an option.
And then you mentioned you have other developments that have CCRs in place that limit renting, and you also said you don't have CCRs for this development.
Why?
No, I'm asking, do you, is, what is in place for this development?
We have not.
Will be in place.
We have not established the, the entity yet. We have not established the HOA yet. We will bring that to the, we will establish that, we'll have our CCRs in place. We have to have them in place and, and we'll record them when the plat records. I don't think we can record, record them prior. If, if people are soliciting input on what they look like, we can provide you with other communities. If you're looking for a commitment to what we would be willing to write in there as far as, as far as rental, I do not have the, the right right now to, just off the top of my head, say we're willing to do this, but we're willing to have a discussion and come back and tell you what is realistic for us.
Can you tell us where your nearest community is?
Yes, we have a townhome community in Saratoga Springs, which is just under construction on Mountain View Corridor.
It's under construction?
Yeah.
But you said you had developments that don't cause these issues. Where are those done at?
I'll finish. That community is under construction. It does have new, it's had to close. You're welcome to go there. You're welcome to go to Arrowhead, intersection property corridor. And when you're through south, you can see our product there. So we see the signs, go down our, our private alleys and, and you will see that, that we do control that parking. You can go to Bluffdale, we have two communities there on the Porter Rockwell extension and, and the same thing.
A little, a little dumb properties to finish?
Do you have any of the word, homes that they are here? Or are they all strictly, because the one we just pulled up are all strictly non-boarding current ones from the community.
I'm just running it through my head. No, I believe our project and.
South Jordan, just one.
Yeah, South Jordan, we, we have a mix of, of both builders, one in there and another building. And we have single family homes and we've had, a single family home doesn't work as a same buffer because it ended up going against the canal, so it doesn't really, doesn't really lie here. You can, you can see the product, you can see who we are.
I'm a conservative.
We think products, good. We're saying after.
I'm a tradesman, I understand product, but that's not where the concern is.
I, we, we can't be here all night, so I recommend you just do some research, Lennar Homes, and just try and figure out on your own if, if we can't get an answer.
One last question.
Go ahead.
Price point, where, where will the price point of these be?
On your singles and on your towns?
I think it's going to be a, a low mid-five on the single.
For the single families?
I think we're going to be 330, 350 on the, on the townhomes.
CCRs, again, I do think it's probably a good idea sooner rather than later that we see something there just for the benefit of the, the neighbors. Will there be anything in the CCRs as far as the amount of time a vehicle can be parked in a stall? If I've got my old beater that's got a blown transmission and I don't want to put it in my driveway, I just want it in a stall?
Yes, we do have controls about inoperable vehicles and nuisances.
What do you typically do or what have you done in other developments as far as rental requirements, caps or anything like that?
Sunflower Fields in Saratoga Springs, we are not selling to rent, to renters or to, or to investors with the idea to turn around and rent. We also have commitments, verbiage in, in the CCRs that, I believe there is one that says you may not convert to rental for two years. I am aware of another community where I believe we do have a 30% cap on the investor sale, investor purchase, and I believe that we, at this point, have not allowed it because the, because of demand. We have great demand now and we can sell to families or individuals who are part of the community.
How does an HOA enforce that? Let's say you say can't sell to investor, you can't sell to someone that's going to rent it and they go ahead and do that anyways. How is that reprimanded?
I actually don't know because as of this point in the communities that I'm involved in, I do not believe it's happened. So I, I don't, I don't have a past, a past experience to, to share with you about what happened and how we would handle it.
So if you remember the conversation with this review, usually it's by a deed restriction. So on the lender or somebody pulls up the title, it'll come up on the radar.
Showing a lien or something like that?
Restriction on the deed. Like, like.
Like a lien.
Just to show that, um, just because my background in law, there's a lot of. Just because of my background in law, there's a lot of very strict federal housing. You know, you've got to be really careful with fair housing and things like that. So restricting what somebody can do with our homes, very, very closely watched through all the laws. But typically, what I've seen is the builders qualify the initial buyer. What happens after that is a little bit difficult because of the law, the police mandate. But the builders typically will enforce that at the time of sale. Instead, we qualify them. They don't they restrict them investor. That's how that's how you're kind of seeing it happen in broader markets. But once you get beyond that, it's really difficult to say who can live in a house and who can't and who can own it and trying to distinguish between is this guy or you know what I mean?
Yeah.
There's a lot of laws about that.
For staff, how how has the city approached that? I see it like putting a two year moratorium on that. That's a brief time when you're living in the area. It seems like a I mean, if it's allowed, I don't know if it'd be allowed or not. A cap seems like a better idea.
The percentage of the rental seems like a better.
What's?
That's typically what's happened, though, more in this city, right?
Thank you for coming up, Matt Stiles.
Thank you.
That's a relatively new issue that we've started to work through, the Del Monte Town Homes and Vista View. Those were the first two projects where we looked at that. We did not look at it like it was temporary, let's say, but it was perpetual maximum on the the percentage of homes in a project that could be rented. We don't necessarily have a great database to use in terms of trying to determine what an appropriate ratio is. What what BJ mentioned, I think, holds true with us if I understood right, that up to thirty percent could be rented. That's right in the ballpark of what we learned as we reached out to some local HOA presidents, for example, and that type of a thing. It's common for those 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 limits to be in place. We heard that, I mean, for example, the town home development that I think you used to live in, right, by the golf course?
Yeah.
They they have a limit. They strictly enforce it, we heard.
Not initially.
Well, we heard now that it's it's a big enough deal that there are people that are waiting, you know, for the next opportunity to rent and that type of a thing. Something between forty and like twenty percent could be rented based on what we heard. And I think this is a little bit different than what Mr. Wendern had touched on, but we do understand that, for example, if a if a service person is deployed, you know, you can't restrict whether they can rent their unit or not or that type of a thing. And there are a number of other things that come into play. So Brad Morgan, the developer with Vista View, is really savvy with that issue. You know, he he was a helpful resource as we looked at coming up with the right number there. He wants to have a buffer always of opportunity because things do come up that that can't be stopped and that type of a thing. But I think it's a very legitimate concern and I think it is something that we need to do more work with, Lennar, certainly.
Mike, will you have that up to Terry's earlier question?
The accident one?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So this is on our website, too, so anyone can pull it up. So this is police reported accidents. So when you click on it, it has back from two thousand and six. For some reason, the nineteen twenty isn't showing up. I clicked there, I don't know why, but but it does have through eighteen as populated. So anyway, I don't know if you have a particular one you want to look at.
That's just total accidents. It doesn't take per capita, I mean, the how many cars, just total accidents.
Yeah, and you can look at it and say there's this many accidents per this many thousand cars, or something like that, you can get that stat.
So the little small white dots, those are also accidents?
No, I'm pretty sure it's Susan Rose. No, that was a one. After you it's graded, so like, yeah, sorry, one to six is that little dot, six to twenty four. So I'm sure you need red dots all over the place.
What is that, just pulling out of ALA, the yellow dot?
It's in here, yeah.
Thirty one grand total?
I can tell you where that one is. It's the M Tech drivers coming up right there. It's mostly the the kids that are coming to school on that south side are causing those.
Isn't that ALA? That's ALA.
This is north, that M Tech building right there.
It's a little building, like a satellite.
Oh, gotcha.
From here, they have the one here as well.
Another concern that was brought up about traffic or roads was the fire trucks being able to assist the homes. Is that a concern with those private drives?
No. The fire marshal reviews all the plans and he's good with them.
You probably wouldn't see a fire truck down with those. So you'd be more fucking.
On the outsides, right?
Beyond Del Monte or they find it centers fire engine.
You click the green one, Mike, on Old Mill and Arrowhead?
This one?
No, Old Mill, yeah. And the intersection went in this last year, twenty twenty, is when the lights went in.
Can I make a traffic observation, too? All schools are left to all these developments. So rep accident wise, like everyone coming out of all of those roads have to go left to go to all the schools. And we don't have buses, so everyone drives. So left to ALA, left to River View. And so the accident percentage by adding more.
When they come back, it'd be a right in them, right?
Yeah, coming back. So but kids going to school, too, you know? Hopefully, once the roads have been swamped across.
That'd be a left come back as you the roundabout force you to come back into your neighborhood this way now. Everyone circles back and you know, come back the same way, most of the roundabouts in.
Roundabout down Old Mill?
Yeah.
So you'll go around and then take a right into your neighborhood.
Yeah, and then come back and then.
No, you well, if you go circle, after you circle through, you can do that.
Is there anybody?
There's going to be a median there.
Well, they say go to the roundabout, circle back around.
BJ will end here. So if, yeah, so if you live in this house and you want to go here and you want to go on Del Monte, yeah, you go left, left, drop your kids off, left, back in.
You can't go left, there will be a median there. So you have to go down to the roundabout and back around. It goes all the way through on the design they have.
So I know Trace is sitting one in front of his house.
Did you still did you change it?
Yeah, there's less median now.
There's less median?
Because I I know Trace, anyway, he wanted to back in his unit or his trailer kids here. And if you put a median, it becomes very difficult. Which sounds like Trace, come on, you're very good at backing trailers.
So if you guys want to get downtown, do you go out to Arrowhead and then over to Main or do you go up to West Park Drive?
Arrowhead.
Arrowhead? So down to Old Mill, over to Arrowhead, and then up to Main Street?
Up to Del Monte.
Down to Mill Road. Old Mill is a neighborhood. Mill Road is a.
Yeah, Mill Road.
Yeah.
So down to Mill Road, Arrowhead, out to Main, and then up? That's typically the drive you guys do?
Yeah, because I live on the other side. Yeah, I go the other way.
Which way do you go?
Up to.
Up this way?
You take Marley up to Del Monte.
And then over? So is there a likelihood that if this road comes in, people that live here will come up here and cut through and go over?
With all those units?
Rather than drive down, over, down, 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 and then up? I would think it'd be quicker to just go up here and then cut over and then go out.
I think BJ is going out right.
They probably still go this way. They still go here.
I imagine this house would probably go like call proximity, right? So like, these guys are probably more likely to go through. Once you get back here, you have to go just as many turns, so maybe go out this way.
You just mentioned earlier, though, you take the what in your mind is the shortest path, right? Whether it is or not.
In your mind, you go.
Yeah, if you're wanting to get here, you'd be driving away from there rather than just come cutting up. And you'd also be driving away from it to come south. So I think it would feel like the quickest way would be to cut through the new neighborhood and go over. I guess we'll find out, right, eventually? What else have we got? What other questions?
I have comments, but not quite anymore. You guys asked all the questions I had.
Maybe the developer is there was a comment made that they had talked to the residents in the neighborhood, but then there were several residents that said they hadn't heard anything. Can you speak to that?
So early on, we monitored what was happening next to us. We followed that. So we we tried to take take into consideration for the city what we could do. So I worked with what I perceived to be a number of the leaders in this neighborhood. Jason's here and hopefully he'll vouch for me. We got with Jason. There were a couple of key people and we asked them to speak to the neighborhood, get as many people as they could. Mr. Anderson organized some some meetings here at the city where everybody could come. And I hope you'll agree, I asked Jason, Jason, do you represent the majority? And he said, I don't represent everybody, but we represent the majority. I think you would agree with that, Jason.
I didn't say I represent the majority. I said I was sharing concerns of the majority, but I can't ever say I represent. Maybe it's sort of, I mean, am I?
I would say it differently. What I said is, Jason, is it fair if we work with you and the people in this room? I specifically asked.
It's not fair to do that.
Dave, you're in the news.
For me, the important thing was to understand what the concerns were. And I really, really think that the different people that came and met with us, I'm not hearing anything necessarily due tonight. I do wish we would have owned up a little bit more on the rental percentage. That's the one thing that I think we should have been more clear about before tonight, the staff, but.
Jason, did you?
I think this was helpful.
We just need to clear, I mean, you see, you speak to all the neighbors, like.
We didn't, and right, and and maybe just from our perspective, and I I appreciate Cody and engineers and what they did in meeting a few times. I think we discussed all of the things that have been representative of relevant issues tonight.
I I did personally meet with every person that borders us, all those single family homes. The Lewis family, which is the one that's clearly Mr. Lewis is here tonight. The most, I think, all but one attended those meetings. And so I was the people that I felt were going to be the most impacted, I sought out and made sure we had conversations. People who were down, like he said, and I didn't mean to represent, I spoke with every person. I didn't go knock on doors or anything like that. But we tried to establish a procedure through Jason. And there were other leaders to get the word out, invite them to the meetings. We had, I think, thirteen or fourteen people in each meeting attend. And the intent was to get as many people in. And we just kept meeting and said we'd keep meeting and we got their lists and we went through their lists and we modified their lists and so. Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. Any other questions for staff or for the developer?
What do we go by? There's a break here and then a break from Tracy's driveway.
I was listening to the neighbors.
All right, don't see any additional questions, so let's move to the commissioner's comment. You want to start, Shawna?
Sure.
All right.
Okay, so I I can really, I really have comments and opinions on both sides. I think one thing is is it's really easy to, as a neighbor or as a community member, to demonize developers. They're only all about the money and all about the money, all about the money. And I have I I've talked to enough developers to know that they care about building strong communities. I think it's good to keep having conversations. And I really think one key point here is that this really is a family heritage piece of property and have been part of our community. And you have property rights, just like everybody else here has property rights. And I think that you've watched, your family has watched and waited, and I think I think it's definitely a thing where it's like, this is our family inheritance. So, yeah, money's part of the issue. It is for everyone. And I really think that this has been a real compromise on both sides of this issue. I think I think that the Tingey family has compromised. I think that the neighbors are feeling compromised, but there has definitely been give on both sides, too. And I think that that's how good neighbors are. I think as far as traffic goes, you guys, I'm on this, I'm on the Nivo School Board. I care about kids and their safety. But hello, you're teaching your kids proper what's going on. You also need, we, me, I'm teaching my kids about when the proper time is to be playing in the streets and not playing in the streets and watching out for cars. My husband's the one who put the box in the road and did the demo for the kids as he's driving over the, you know, driving over the box, showing them what happens. But also, we love our kids and so we're going to drive carefully through neighborhoods. I think that it's really good to connect those neighborhoods because whether you're a churchgoer or not a churchgoer, it's great to connect neighborhoods and those are going to be people that you know and love. And I live in a neighborhood, I say this almost every commission, I live in a neighborhood where we have a mix of single family homes on my homes on a third acre lot. There's townhomes, there's condos, and I love the diversity of people that are in my in my neighborhood. I think that if there's problems, we can go and we in Spanish Fork look at each other in the eyes and we can go respectfully talk to our neighbors and say, hey, dude, you're teen, you know? And so I or or, you know, I see that you're rushing off to or whatever. We can knock on doors and we, that's just who we are in Spanish Fork. That's who we are in Utah. We we respectfully talk to neighbors. And I think it just goes both ways. Let's see. I think that we definitely listen to people we represent and we represent people who are neighbors, we represent people who are property owners, and I really feel like it's really a good balance. I appreciate Lennar, who's trying to be a sensible builder. I also, but and I also agree that it should be eight units to the acre. I I think that the long that the on the proposed development, that the long line of townhomes that are along Del Monte, I think that there's not enough suit enough, yeah, there's not enough close, there's not enough close parking stalls available, especially because they don't have driveways. And so anybody coming to visit are going to be going, I gotta park down around all of that. I live, again, I say this every planning commission meeting, I live near a town home development where the parking is a huge problem. And they and whenever I go into there to go visit somebody, it's just a hassle to go and find these. And and so I I personally think that it would be good to have more parking spots in this general area. And I actually, my, one of my biggest concern is still, I say this a lot, too, that of people turning left out of Quail Hollow on from Riverway. Kevin, how do you get to the freeway from your house?
I turn left. I go go through Quail Hollow, turn left there and then turn right down Arrowhead and go out to the Benjamin.
And do you go during school? Do you go during high traffic times?
No.
And are we seeing accidents?
I I haven't had to because I've been working from home, but when I was commuting and I would go that way, as far as accidents go, I think I think we've seen that there's not a lot of accidents that occur on those intersections each year. But there have been times that, yeah, I've had to sit and wait.
Yeah, that turn.
Not forty minutes, not fifty minutes. It adds an extra maybe five minutes to my commute.
Right.
There have been times, but it's.
Yeah, so not not a lot, but this this left turn for these guys, that's what, that's one of my big hangups there.
Yeah, and it's not so much the car's coming towards you from ALA. It's you're just about to turn out and all of a sudden a car comes around the corner. And 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 we've addressed that.
Right.
It's an issue. There's nothing at this point that you can really.
Right.
Do about that.
We're going to ask you out to put a red riot arrow here to give breaks and we got told no.
Yeah.
Don't.
I mean, it's when you're dealing with.
That's that's frustrating.
One positive that you will have is there will be more lanes here. This will be widened by, you know, probably if you hear with that turn lane, it'll be even bigger. So you cannot have to look two directions to make your decision. You can just look left. I mean, you have to look both ways, but it'll be a little easier. There'll be smaller asphalt, there'll be smaller lanes. Don't take that.
Yeah.
Anyway, it'll be a little better. The only solution that we asked our traffic engineer, again, little side note on Hurry Along here, is to put a median in and then do some sort of a turning area, a small traffic circle there and probably a couple of places. No one wants that, right? I mean, no one wants to have more stuff in the street to go around, but.
Yeah.
It would slow down traffic.
Go right, make a U-turn around something and come back. Like in the accidents, I've been there.
To justify.
Talking to residents, they're like, nah.
Yeah.
They have a ten minute window, it's really bad. So we're trying to weigh the the costs.
Yeah, is it is it worth it? And would they use it?
See once hideout sergeant and if these guys get approved, once they come in as well, what does it look like? And then make a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that a traffic circle would even be used. People would still probably sit there and wait to turn left rather than...
Unless you put a...
Unless it were really bad. But if I sat there for five minutes and I couldn't turn, then yeah, I'd hardly even turn right and go around the traffic circle. But I don't know.
Okay. I think that's about all my issues.
My comments on it, I, I fall on the side of the landowner's rights to develop his land. And I, they have, they've been there longer than maybe that's what we've heard from tonight. And they have the right to do what they want with the line they have within the limits set in our zoning code. I don't think that should be stretched. I think we're at the top range of that now with, with what the city, not this, with what the city showed up there. I like that layout better. I like it breaking up along Del Monte and adding better parking closer to the units. So I like that, I like that plan. I think as far as the R3 zoning, that's if, as Dave said, it's a range that we have to work with here. And we're already being asked to approve over that. I don't think it should be over that. I think it's already being given at a, at the high end of it is enough of an ask. The, the concern on Wheatfield, I, I can see how it's a concern to the neighborhood. It's also been a road that's been there, established in, on their side of the line for as long as that development's been there. I think the calming, if that's what you call it, the calming island in the middle of the slow traffic down is a good idea. It probably obstructs a lot of things. I'm sure we probably didn't want to do that. But it does add some resistance to that flow, so it's a good idea. And I'd like to see some more parking. So my, my preference would be to see something along the lines of what was redlined up on the screen. And then I'd like to see CCRs. I'd like to have them, I would want to know what that is, what's going to be in place. That weighs on my decision. I, I think of all the things we look at, we ought to have that complete package before it comes before us, when they're asking for a change. Complies, it doesn't even come before us. When they're asking for a change, when there's an ask involved, I think we should be able to see those.
Jesse?
Yeah, so I think the biggest concerns I heard tonight were traffic and parking were the two biggest things. So I would, I would agree, the splitting up the townhomes, going below the eight, eight units per acre density to add some of that parking and to get below that maximum would be necessary. But also I feel like with the traffic concerns that are being brought up and safety concerns, because those were some big issues and they're important. We're going to be bringing in some bigger roads, some sidewalks or the trail system all the way down. Some things that are going to add safety to that spot in town where right now, nobody can walk down that road. So in my mind, that, that does do some of the things that are being asked. The second part is, I guess, just echoing, is the fact that we are, we, or Dave or the city staff has recommended or said that we try, we don't ever push above that maximum. We try to stay away from that maximum number a little bit. And so that would be one of the biggest contingencies for me is that it needs to come below that maximum number.
My thoughts are, you know, echo a lot of what was said. It's hard to find a balance between property owner rights and appeasing and making the neighbors comfortable. That being said, you mentioned, Cody, you had mentioned that the neighbors knew well before, you know, what the zoning was or what the potential zoning or...
General plan.
General plan was for that area. But that's not to say that as a planning commission, as a city and city council, that we didn't make a mistake in the past. And in my honest opinion, I believe we did. And I believe that should have been changed many years ago from what it was. It's unfortunate that it wasn't. It's hard for me to look at what we just did recently up the road with the townhomes there and to see the amount of give and take and what that developer had to give up to then look at this and say, it'd be all right with you just making adjustment of four or five units from what you initially started out with, because they adjusted quite a bit more than that. When it comes to our job as planning commissioners, Title 15 changes, things like that, I love because they're simple for the most part. And because if, if we make a mistake and a year or two down the road, another planning commission realizes it was a mistake, we just pull out the red ink and we can fix that mistake. But if we make a mistake when it comes to building, it's going to take possibly a hundred years before we can fix that mistake. And so that's why it's obviously very important that we consider everything before we make a decision. I, I also agree. I personally would not recommend to the city council anything above what that density holds, the eight units. I think, I think there needs to be an adjustment there. And in particular, I think as well as what Shawna said, the parking on that alleyway closest to Del Monte needs to be increased. Work on that a little bit more and, and I think maybe we could recommend something. But at this point, that, that's where I stand. So, that being said...
Can I ask two quick questions or is that not appropriate enough?
Probably not at this point, now that we've made kind of our final comments. If you want to talk after the meeting, we can do that. But I think, I think at this point, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
What's the motion? I mean, what's the proposed motion?
So we've got, we've got three options, basically. We can recommend...
Yeah, what do we do, something else?
Yeah, we could recommend that the city council approve it. That could be our recommendation. We could recommend that the city council deny it. Or we could ask that it be tabled and be brought back before us at a later time. I think those are the three options. Anything else, Dave? Four, let's remind me what the fourth one is.
You can recommend that it be approved with conditions.
Okay, that's correct.
And that could happen in a lot of different ways if you wanted to.
So those are our options.
Well, if we did do with conditions, what would our conditions be?
I think there'd be several, and I'd rather just table it now.
Oh, yeah, that's probably...
Enough still up in the air that I would be more comfortable with it being tabled and then brought back before us.
Especially if you'd like to have more conversation.
Can I please figure it out, miss?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, so we want to work, timing is really important to us. We made a strategic decision to come before you early on to try to sort a lot of this out. And we've been in multiple DRC meetings before this body multiple times. We will work with you. So my, my strong request would be if you let us go forward tonight, we can work with the staff. I'm confident we can get the conditions. It's not that complicated. I'm confident we can get something that, that will work. I think Dave would agree with me on that, that we can work together based on our history to make sure the conditions are good. It just feels like, because we've had so many bites of the apple and so many times that to do it at this late date, I mean, I've literally been meeting in front of you for a year, over a year at this point.
Let me ask you a question, Cody.
Okay.
Because personally, I don't feel comfortable with that. I would, I would rather see it come before us as a commission and have our input before it goes to city council. I would be willing, and I would guess that these, these individuals would as well, to, to meet at an off-date rather than wait a full month before we see it again. I don't know how long it would take you and the city.
Does that help them get in front of the council?
Less, good question.
You have to have a public meeting still. Which would mean a work session.
Let's talk timing on this then, if we were to table it.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be that, you know, where you're having a work session is the last week of the month. If you wanted to not only have a work session, but also have a regular meeting as part of that evening, it'd have to be a public meeting. And I notice as such, we have an action, action item on an agenda for that night. If you were to act on it that night and make a recommendation, then it could go to the city council the following week after that, the first week in June.
If we were to make a motion tonight, when would it go to the city council?
If you were to make a motion to recommend either approval or denial, it'd be thirteen days from tonight, that next Tuesday, but the following.
So we're bumping it through, three weeks if we would...
I think that's how the timing would play out.
I guess it would be June 1st, next city council meeting after that.
What are your thoughts on that?
I just know we can reach a compromise. I know it's not fair to make you come back, but I feel like there's already conditions in place based on the staff's recommendations. So, following the recommendations of staff, I believe hit every single concern you brought up.
Does an additional two weeks delay or cause timing issues for you guys?
So it's mostly us as a family. You know, we have financial commitments and we have certain things. And so that's why I've been pushing this as fast as we can, you know, with banks and things like that. So it, it does cause us additional stress. That's why I'm asking for it. As a developer, I typically have a billion-dollar hedge fund for me. And it doesn't make sense to ask for more time. But this situation, we're a small family and it will add stress.
Dave, another question then, because I think we've seen this in the past. We give a recommendation and between the time that we've given a recommendation and it goes before the city council, the developers have made some adjustments. It doesn't come back to us. Goes to the city council and they, they do their vote. Thoughts on that?
We've seen that go a lot of different ways once it gets to that point.
We have, but it's happened. So, do we make a recommendation tonight? You guys work with the developers. They bring something different before the, I don't like that because it's different from what we saw and what we voted on. But, but it's happened.
But you can say with conditions, but you can say we vote to do the change with the conditions and we give conditions.
Well, first of all, I don't have to tell you guys what to do, right?
Yeah.
We're here to help you understand what your options are. There's another factor to consider, and I think we just kind of heard that. There are other people interested in the decision and understanding, you know, what your recommendation is, what it's based on, different things like that. And having access to that, having that process be transparent and so forth. So, you know, having, having access to materials that are on an agenda before it's presented to you or the city council, I think that kind of stuff really does matter as well. In the past, when we've, we've done what you just described, which is planning commission articulates conditions that need to be met before something is presented to the city council for consideration. Those conditions, if I remember right, typically have not been a big deal. And I don't think typically we've had, for example, neighbors that cared a lot and that type of a thing. And they've been just relatively maybe minor issues. So I, again, not have the whole wanting to suggest that you do one thing or another, but I think that's worth considering.
All right, so let's, let's articulate, articulate what our conditions, our biggest concerns are. What do we want to see? Units?
Parking.
And park, so units and parking, those go together?
But my, my...
And CCNRs?
Concern is I would hate to see green space lost to make up for units and parking. And so that's why...
Finally, it doesn't lose any green space.
Exactly. And so, but is this the, the plan that we're actually recommending? I think, I think you would say something otherwise.
I hear you loud and clear. We're going to take units down. I'll just do it. The one thing that you didn't address that I maybe would ask for you to address is my request to recognize fourteen acres. I think that's an important point just for us going forward. But what I can commit to you is we will take units out. I totally a hundred percent agree. As I'm looking at this and I'm a, I'm a homeowner, I want parking, you know, all the way spread across. So you've got, this are ready for some parking. If we could do some units like they said here and here and add, you know, an additional, so we take a couple of units here, we take a couple of units here, this is already there. That's going to give these guys parking here, these guys parking there, these guys parking here. And so I think there's a very easy compromise that we're more than willing to concede tonight. But I would ask that you help me with this for, I think...
But I want to see that.
And I, and that's fair. I agree.
You're saying you will?
I think we could commit to it right now. I could tell you...
I'm not like, like I said earlier, I'm, yeah, I'm not comfortable with just saying, okay, we'll work with the city, we'll come up with something.
But if we, what if we said tonight, we will remove these two units, we'll remove these two units, we'll turn this into parking, this into parking, and this into parking. What that does is, we have fourteen acres, we're going to reduce it by four or five. We're, we're not talking about a lot, but that right there, if we said tonight, we will bring back a map to the city with parking here, parking here, and parking there.
I will, I will tell you right now, and this is consistent with how I, I voted in the past, I'm not going to recommend personally anything above what the density...
Right.
And so if, if you're not at the eight or below, I wouldn't recommend it.
And so can we just be clear?
It's four units.
Times fourteen times eight, because it's just over fourteen acres. It is fourteen acres.
Dave, do you want to, Dave or Brandon, do you want to address?
I think the main thing is we're not going to recognize the fourteen.
Because I'm, the fourteen, the fourteen acres, explain this to me real quick. And the way the city's using that in their density calculation.
All of the city code. It's, and I appreciate where Cody's coming from, but it's just not what our code requires in terms of how we calculate density. Look at Brandon because he's our numbers guy on this. Their fourteen acres is the overall acreage of the property, but, and this image shows it well. Yeah, there's a pipe running through the property, which makes it unbuildable land.
Meaning you couldn't put anything on there anyways? So you reduce the acreage of the pipe from your total density of...
And then that is multiplied by some number to, to determine what the maximum allowable density would be, in this case it's eight. So that's how, that's just...
So no offense to you, you know, the way you're wanting to calculate it, the way we've always done it is based on the calculation the city provides us.
I think it was a consistent comment from all four of the commissioners here tonight.
Yeah, and I'm sensitive to that. And again, just trying to compromise, so asking for something in exchange. So for example, the code also says on parking, it's very specific how many parking. We talk about landowner rights and what we're doing. So it's, it says specifically, this is the many units you're required by law and the code. Anything beyond that's arbitrary at this point, because you don't have, you know, and so that, it's got a couple of ways.
Right, but here's the...
Yeah, I was going to address that earlier as well, because there's so many ways that that can be looked at when it's just, when you're looking at just a number on a paper. But when you look at an actual development and you're looking at alleyways and you're looking at units without driveways, you've got to take all of that into consideration, not just what's the final number. How far from, from units and front doors are parking stalls, additional parking lots, you know, for guests and everything? You've got, you've got to take all of that into consideration, not just the calculation.
And, oh yeah, go ahead.
It's illustrated that the, the idea of where we're getting to, like saying we can get there verbally, I, I think that just slouches back and forth. I think I want to see it.
I appreciate that. No, I thank you for listening. I definitely hear you. I understand.
Also, the give and take, too, has to do with, if you look back in the history with the other developer that's on the other side of M-Tech, we actually asked him to, he did, he had a lot of design like yours and some without driveways, but we asked him to put driveways in. And so, so we're not asking you to put driveways with everyone, which might be a mistake, but that's, I mean, I feel like that's part of the compromise. So it sounds like we're asking you to, to, you know...
Totally understand. I mean, strategically, we made a decision early on. We could have brought in a plan and put 250 units on, you know?
Right.
And then worked our way backwards. But we didn't do that. I, I was very clear with the city. Our, we just wanted to come in and be fair and...
Right.
I've played that game before as a developer, where you go in and you say, we want 250 units and then we start to cut back.
Right.
I would just point out...
Yeah, except you are asking for over the top and we're just asking for the top. So, thank you.
I would make a motion to table this item until it comes back before the planning commission.
Okay, I've got a motion.
I'll second it.
And I've got a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Carden.
Aye.
Okay.
I just clarify one thing. When are we going to do that? We're going to do that in a work session before? I am open, I'm fine with that, like you mentioned?
I'm fine with that, too.
Or do we want to do it next meeting?
Based on what I'm hearing from the developer, they'd like it sooner rather than later. Dave, how does that work with scheduling with, with, I guess we were going to have that meeting anyways, right?
Many of the last Tuesday or Thursday of each month. So if you'd like to decide that now, we were going to ask about that at the end of the meeting tonight.
Does that give the city enough time to get out notices again?
I would ask that you say no, it couldn't be sooner than that, but provided that the applicants... applicants have given us and staff some reason to believe that your concerns have been addressed, then we hold a meeting that night, you know, last week of the month. I think that absolutely gives them adequate time to respond to what you've talked about, but to be contingent on that.
So we'll be talking about the 25th or the 27th?
I think that's one of those two places.
I count the 25th.
Which day is which? Tuesday or Thursday?
Tuesday, the 25th, Thursday, the 27th.
City council's not meeting Tuesday, the 25th, aren't they? The week before that? Let's plan on the 25th?
My daughter's graduating that night.
27th.
27th is where, is what I would prefer, but...
And that's contingent on the developer being ready?
Would it be helpful if we could mail the entire planning commission?
Yes.
Just to confirm?
Just have that as our work meeting night, and if it's ready, it's ready. If it's not, it's not.
Also, remember that CCNRs have been, are important to us too. They have been for other developers too, so we're being consistent with...
And generally, just to be clear, it's usually just a draft, but it has some of the provisions that...
That we've...
It's likely to see that what's presented for regulation.
Thanks, you guys. No, that's not what you're looking for tonight, but hopefully we can come to a resolution.
Thank you. You guys have a tough job, so we appreciate it.
We're trying.
All right. Next agenda item.
Do you need a recess or are you on?
Thank you.
Take five minutes. Five-minute recess. All right.
It's the fun guy.
Keep on rolling. Okay, we're back. Welcome back.
Is there anything else this meeting?
Are you?
We have transportation plan amendments.
Yes.
Concept review.
Transportation.
So let's move on to agenda item three, general plan amendment for the transportation master plan. All right, now I got to get what I sent to...
It's in or not the...
Other than that?
Oh, it is. I didn't, it wasn't there when I looked.
Any moment, let me tell them then. All right. Most of it was the trails should go on this side of the road, not that side of the road type stuff. We had a new recreation master plan come out where they did a super in-depth study in connectivity, and so we just kind of tweaked to match that.
Is this, is that, are you referring to the one that Dell presented?
Yeah.
A few months ago?
Yep. So now we put the two together, it's one data set, and now it's just reference with two different master plans. That's never been done before, so it's really not at all put together. So some of it, we had to tweak on our end. Anyway, so for example, this one, the first one is old, the second one's the new. Just in general, this is South Lane, Annie's Acres is right here, the River Run Town Homes is here, the Gardener's Field is here. Again, just looking at development, what makes sense. End goal is to have the fairgrounds connect to the river. How's the best way to do that? Original is coming down the back of the commercial. That creates kind of a corridor of wall and wall. Say, that wall is a better way to go. So the thought was, again, we took that one out and put it down. It's not city drive, it's River Run Road, down to the river, stuff like that. The original plan is to have two separate trails on either side. It didn't match what was actually out there, so we adjusted that to match what's out there. Eventually having a trail on Main Street on the east side of the road, where this one did not have it. Again, some of these are really expensive, will take some landowner cooperation, stuff like that, but again, if we have it in the plan, it's easier to work through. That's one of the changes. This one was a master plan thing with the parks, but we have some people wanting to develop down here. This is your help right here. All the trails were on the outsides, so if you went around in a square, you'd have to cross the road like six times to make that. So instead, we shifted to interior, easier, better connected. So that's the change there.
We shifted for the connection on the 100th and South.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, so the new road will come this way instead of straight through. Sort of like the map, good call.
Is there any consideration with that school that's going to be going, that line that we were talking about?
Yeah, so this will need to change as well, based on our last conversation about putting the roundabout probably straight through. So this collector road, again, we'll update this again, we'll then move through here. I already have a list of a few things to add to the next run, so that is one of them.
I would love it if Josie was here to participate. She's the engineer who gets to make the mandatory revisions that we do here.
I know. I think this is like the seventh revision that she made and we still haven't more. But we're just like, all right, we'll get this one through and then we'll do a new set so we don't keep coming back with the same kind of stuff. She shouldn't be here, she's in Florida. This one, I don't think, did this seem about five years ago? Anyway, this is the Anshakko, 955 and older, tight field duplexes. The original plan is to come along the back, all the way behind KFC and the Sun Gloom Cafe, but then we'd get it to Main Street and there'd be no crossing. Besides 1,000 north, there's no crossing clear up until 1600 north. So essentially, you come to Main Street, backtrack a couple hundred feet, cross, and then go up again to the trail that goes behind Macy's and the Joann's and that. So we changed it to go out in front of Sun Gloom by Anshakko again. Minor change, but...
Cross at the light.
Cross, go straight to the light, rather than going up and around and back down. So. It's there. This one, the plan is to be on the east side, but with Gage Canyon Heritage Farms and after this development, didn't make sense to leave it all on this side of the road. So it's putting it where we've already approved it to go, on the west side, and then crosses where it goes down by the Pioneer Cemetery. The trails are existing for a lot of money over here, but it will be built for a lot of this with Gage Canyon. Anyway, this one is a pretty big change. You won't see it today, but as things develop out here, you will. So 1600 originally was the main draw to come out, but that would involve a crossing here. Worked with the railroad, met with them, talked to them about some options, and we got a lot of red flags from them. We already have the crossing of Main Street by the Sinclair Gas Station, and so we create the new collector road to come out, pass the Sinclair by Sprinkler Supply or whatever, out and down and through. Trying to figure where this is. It's hard to find aerial to...
It's the large unmanned Sinclair.
Okay, that one. I'll relate it. This is what it would be. The change could be coming along here and then down through this point, rather than coming here. You have to have like a four-way synchronized, anyway.
Maybe zoom in a little.
Railroad said no, so I don't know if it's worth going into what we asked about doing here, but just to make sense for a big collector road to go through that, it's on a diagonal.
And right now, where you're proposing on, what is that, 1900? That's not going, that doesn't go through currently.
No, it stops the Sprinkler Supply or whatever this last building is. And then it lines up better on, if you look to east-west collector roads. You have a railroad here or airport here that kind of messes this up. We have a major one, a minor one, a major one, a minor one, a major one, and it kind of separates, gives some space even between the major and minor ones. This is the north end. The old master plan had a curb road that would go parallel to the airport. That was a while ago. We got some interest, and the interested party is wanting to square the road like this and agree. So this would square that road rather than that one. This is corner to south, and the jail is right here. A general change is matching the new master plan. We only had a few designations. We had a couple more colorings different. Some have been updated to match the, the one that was passing council for the parks plan. Another thing we added is next to the airport, there's no build zones, and then there's your building can only be so high zones. And so as people are looking at our plans and looking at their plans to say, what can I build if I'm going to buy a property around the airport? This gives an indication of where those, the height would be a restriction. And then in the master plan, there's a link where you can click and see the actual one done by the airport engineer and has formulas and things, how to calculate how tall the building would be. This is just to give them a heads up on our transportation map. And there's, that's the link you click on, and it gives you the plan for the, how to build around the airport. So that can put you to sleep, I'm not sure what will, but that is...
It's very controversial.
That is the gist over here. Looks good. Something was brought up last night that I thought was an interesting idea. As we develop or as the city starts to expand west of I-15, and you've got more, you know, farmers and horse owners to be able to have some kind of a horse trail. I mean, a river trail right now, it's great for bikers and joggers, but it'd be awesome to have something that would let you ride, you know, ride horseback from west of I-15 out to Utah Lake along the river. Something like that would be cool. Yeah, for sure. So this dash line is going to be unpaged trail, so you're going to have the trail on both sides. Perfect. One reason is to maintain the river, right? You can get out from two angles. Some spots you can reach from one really easy, but some that you don't hold. So the idea is one would be the biker multi-use type deal, and the other one would be for horses, and it'd just be a crusher fines. That's awesome. But it was a good point to... Step ahead. That's awesome. Extend it, you know, as we go along. There's grants to do that. That's why we have the river trails, the grants. Where it makes sense, yeah. Okay, awesome. Anything else on that one? Okay, it's a public hearing, so at this point, we will move into public hearings. Is there anybody that wants to address the transportation master plan, general plan amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing, and I will, would entertain a motion.
I can make a motion that we approve the revisions to the transport master plan as noted by staff.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next agenda item, Title 15 amendments.
Well, you like these. Remember, you just said you like these.
I do like these ones. These ones are great.
Talked about this enough last week that I'm going to try to be really brief. Today, the Development Review Committee recommended that we change Title 15.
Very bottom line?
That is that the city council amend Title 15. So it's to limit the square footage of habitable living space for detached accessory dwelling units to 1,000 square feet and to create a separate basically parking requirement for detached accessory dwelling units that be distinct from internal or attached accessory dwelling units, so that we require two spaces for detached. Right now, the state law limits the number of spaces that we can require for attached ADUs at one. It's silent on detached ADUs, so we're recommending that we require two for detached ADUs. And that's the proposal.
So max of a thousand, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. I was going to say max of 1,000 and parking is what?
Can I scroll down?
That's it. Yep, those are the changes.
But we still have in places to know and of parking for the ADU stalls. So in some cases, that might go back to our original standard, which was five total.
Is that it for this one? Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Oh, wait, sorry, public hearing. So let's move into public hearing for Title 15 amendments. Anyone here that would like to speak to this change? Seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. And now I would entertain a motion.
Hey, I would make a motion that we recommend to the city council that the Title 15 amendments be changed past.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything else prior to...
Adjourning.
Adjourning, yes.
Concept plan. We've discussed an idea with these folks a few times. They've been working on this for a few months. I don't know how you're going to want to look at it. This property is the property that is just south of the river on the east side of Main Street, where there's the, it's a big steel building. It's a riding arena. It is, maybe help us with the cursor there, Mike? It's that property there, and this is the arena that I'm referring to. So it's this property. Mr. Hatch, who will talk to you guys tonight, is aware that we've been working on a plan for the River Bottoms, and I think that plays into what he's going to propose. But relative to exactly how the city would view, kind of property here immediately adjacent to Main Street, there are three different scenarios that we have in what still is a draft River Bottoms vision plan. Two of those scenarios really don't contemplate any kind of development along Main Street. The third one contemplates pretty intense development along Main Street. And you could maybe view what you'll see here in a second, this is being just that, maybe some pretty intense development along Main Street. But that is, I guess, how I'm going to set the table for now. I will say that in my opinion, the concept has merit for you to at least look at and talk through and think about. I think there are definitely some things that, without maybe zeroing in on the details really precisely, some things about it that definitely warrant consideration. So that's all. I'm going to tee it up for better or worse, and I think we have the latest version.
Just to turn off that.
Without events on this.
So this would be just two lots.
Okay, gotcha.
Hi, Ford. If we're going to do latest Cinco de Mayo's every year, we get a taco budget for the city. Getting there. Yeah, so thanks for, thanks for the light, Dave. We've been working with Dave and the staff and kind of coming up with some different ideas and things. We know that the river is a special place to the city and to the residents of Spanish Fork, and we wanted to incorporate that idea into our thought process here, as well as Main Street is fantastic infrastructure, handle a lot of traffic. And so kind of with this idea, as you can see, what we did is we packed as much of our density as we could right next to Main Street. We have nearly, on this design, we have nearly 50% of open space. So the green area you see is over seven and a half, 7.35 acres approximately right now. We've incorporated, what our vision for this is, is that the river should be enjoyed by everybody, not a few rich people with locks backing up to the river or whatever. So what we, you know, what, obviously, we would love to work through this with the city and talk some ideas out, but our thoughts here is, this would be a fantastic area where we've got this large of an open space, all the trails, you know, we've got the trail on Main Street, the trail along the river, kind of come in and provide an additional network of trails, provide amenities in the park space, where the residents of Spanish Fork, not the residents of this neighborhood, we would, we envision this as being a great spot for a city amenity, where we can come in and put the parking lot there, kind of make it a trailhead where people can park and get out and ride their bikes, walk their dogs, barbecue, pick back, throw frisbees, that type of thing, and, you know, maybe another great location in the city where food trucks come and people hang out and are along the river. It's just a really fantastic, beautiful piece of property. So with that... So with that in mind, we've, we've tried to be, like, like I said, the, the, the general plan designation here is mixed use. This zoning, this has been designed in accordance with the R4 zone, which is consistent with the mixed use designation. Having said that, we also tried to make a good effort here to really take advantage of the beautiful river area and stay away from it with our housing.
So you're 20 units per acre?
Yes, sir.
On the seven acres that you have there?
Twenty on, so actually, yeah, exactly. We're twenty, so some of that property wouldn't count towards density because it's sensitive area along the river. And so we've kind of estimated, you can see that kind of blue line. It's kind of, if you would look at the tree line, that, that'll have to kind of be refined and things, but we're kind of, we've kind of excluded that. And then did 20 on it. And yes, we crammed about 20 units to the acre right there along the road in order to leave the rest of it wide open.
Two accesses, two, two roads. There's one currently that goes to the.
Yes, there's one currently. And that one that you saw on the south end is, it's sufficient distance from the existing entrance that's down kind of that auto shop for a UDOT approval.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, it makes it, we're pretty limited on where that could come in. But by doing that and then utilizing the existing access that would be grandfathered in by UDOT, we think that that's probably the, the best way to get that traffic flow.
So you've got a primary and an emergency. Emergency only used for emergency?
No, we envision it, I mean, depending on what UDOT makes us do, we would like to present it to UDOT as, as a regular entrance. But they could come in and say right in, right out or something like that.
Are your units rental or owner?
That is to be determined. I don't know that we have a specific direction on that at this point. We also haven't worked on, you know, like the vision of what the buildings and things would look like. Things that honestly, we haven't even touched right now. We'd like to, we'd like to work with the city, not against them. And so we'd like to kind of get input and things like that and really find out what would be appropriate for this area in the city's view.
Michael, can you go back to their concept site plan?
Is this the only concept plan you guys had or were there, did I hear there were multiple?
We saw a previous version.
Okay.
Is this the only one we have to review?
Yeah, this is the only one that we submitted. The others were pretty rough and, and did not provide the open space like this. Not, in, in our work with Dave, he just kept reiterating that we want to really be sensitive to this river corridor. So, so we revised them and, you know.
Explain, are these pavilions? What, what am I looking?
Yeah, that's what we're kind of envisioning. Those is like those little pavilions with, you know, with like a little picnic table under them and one of the little barbecue, charcoal barbecue pits or whatever amenities the city would like. I mean, that's something that we'd like to, as I say, you know, we're not here to tell you guys that you want this as a city park.
So, and that's, that was going to be my next question, would we want this as a city park? Would the city want to maintain?
Would be dedicated to the goal. Well, and how about? Honestly, I think we need to take kind of just a general step back, at least as staff, I feel like we do. And maybe start with like some step-by-step kinds of questions, really. These are things that that Mike and I have talked about. First of all, what are your thoughts about the idea of development here? This property currently is not zoned for that. We have designated it that way.
I have no interest in that right now.
So that's, I mean, literally, I feel like.
It's my blunt feedback on it. Yeah.
And Mike and I have talked about us as staff not necessarily knowing, you know, what that.
That's 147 units.
Opinion would be.
Ish.
Well, and even I would say this, regardless of what this looks like in terms of density, whatever it would end up being, does the concept of having residential development along Main Street with some open space along the river appeal to you at all? And I will just say this, from staff's perspective, this is a fairly significant carrot that somebody could dangle out, you know, in front of us, given everything else that we're doing along the river and other investments that the city's making and that type of a thing. So that's, that's absolutely part of why.
Is this, is this the existing trail?
It looks like, it looks like that's where the bridge goes over.
Yes.
Yeah, that is the bridge right there.
In, in addition to that, so now I'm not wanting necessarily to be in the salesman role here at all. But as well, having a trailhead that would provide access to the river and have that be open to the public, different things like that. That as much as anything is why I.
We do have a ballpark about a quarter mile down the road that has a lot of parking out of it.
It's a really good point. I mean, seriously, yeah, stuff like that. But in my mind, we're not ready at all to start to get into the details of this. What it would take to park that. And incidentally as well, exactly how we would calculate density, given the fact that, in the image that Mike had up just a second ago, shows the portion of the property that is floodplain, which is the blue. Both shades of blue. And that does impact how we calculate allowable density. They still have a significant part of the property that's out of the floodplain. That's, that's the gray and everything else, but.
Any idea what that is?
The black.
How much would be buildable?
And not only that, but what, what's the general plan for this?
Yeah, that was my.
To begin with. So it's currently mixed use?
It's mixed use. Yeah, so the idea of having the property zoned R4 that conceivably is consistent with the general plan.
But we, we've also just entertained three or four, like five different options. Just a few months ago of amending that.
That's exactly, that's, and that's where I feel like honestly, Mike spent a little bit of nimbo's. We've been corresponding for at least a few months now about this. But you're right. And I, I'm with you and everybody else in terms of not yet knowing exactly how that plays out.
So it's kind of showed to give anybody clear direction when we haven't, I mean, we're down to five different options. That's not really a, a clear straightforward path for a developer.
I would probably actually say we're down to kind of two options, really.
Might be. I haven't seen them.
One would. I may be lumping some together there. At least for this property, I mean, there is, there has been discussion about having a corridor development adjacent to Main Street and obviously other scenarios that wouldn't. You know, where this would be eligible as a sending area for TDRs. And that would be it. And in all candor, you know, to kind of maybe talk about the other perspective of the zoning remaining the way that it is. With a big arena on the property and different things of that nature. I think if the zoning doesn't change, the arena probably stays. And, you know, it probably does get used for similar purposes to what it's been used for since it was built 20 years ago. Which is not necessarily inconsistent at all with what we're trying to do in the River Bottoms. As I, again, we're here tonight to try to get your thoughts on maybe what might be the priorities for you as we think about what makes sense for this property.
Are you, is the property owner here? Have you, have you guys contacted, had communication with the property owner?
The property owner's realtor is here. We're under contract on the property, but we're not the owner.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the property that's been proposed before us with the, with the gentleman that's come a couple of times wanting to develop?
South of here.
South of here. You know where the little pond is?
Right there.
Okay.
And it's a little bit different from a key perspective, but it's at the same time. Identical relative to relationship with the River Bottoms and different things like that to this property.
Could you bring up the general plan for the current general plan and then? My thought is, so it's mixed use. We do have a need for affordable housing, high-density apartments in our city. There's lots of townhomes and lots of things like what, what we all hashed around, hashed out earlier. But the question is, is that the appropriate place? And do we need to wait till we know for sure about what's happening with our, with the River Bottoms?
Just, I mean, just being, adding my tweets, I don't, don't mean to be rude with my bluntness. I just want to make sure I'm blunt with you when I, when I go through it. Pause is for me is I like the idea of the park back there that when somebody comes to us with a development that enhances the community, an element of it does enhance the community. I like that. And your current concept plan has an element of that. But I could not get behind that in this location right now. Because of what we've been doing and because we don't really have, I don't think we've determined exactly where we're, what we want to do in that area, what we want to see that area develop into. So I, I just want to, I want to be clear with you on that. I mean, I, I don't want to be too big of a Debbie Downer on it with you, but I'm, that would not be something I could get behind and support.
Is there a different use taught that you're thinking of?
I like a riding arena. Yeah, with some open space. Yeah. That's, I like that quite a bit. You know, I, I think that, I mean.
I just curious, is it commercial, industrial, lower density? Is there something versus what's there?
I definitely like the riding arena more to, more than the commercial that's directly south of it.
Right.
Well, wouldn't that riding arena be a great asset to the city to piggyback alongside of the rodeo grounds that you already own? Because that riding arena is fantastic. And inside, I have a lot of pictures. I can send them over. It's beautiful. And the reality is, is with one of those buildings shifted somewhere else, we could give that riding arena to the city. I don't know if that's an interest to the city, but it is a beautiful facility.
Put it in your backyard.
Put it in my old stuff.
I hope you got a big truck.
Yeah, no.
So.
I'm, I'm with, and I probably shouldn't have said that because obviously we don't, commissioners take.
Right.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, I just don't. I, I don't know. It's, it's hard to envision what that would look like right there. It really is for me because being right off Main Street, I, I don't know. I don't know if that's the right location for that much density. But at the same time, my question is, how often do we fight with trying to put density in surrounding neighborhoods where the neighborhoods are already built up? Where in this case, you don't have that. So you don't have to worry about the surrounding neighborhood. So, you know, that, that's a big plus for this location.
I love the green space. I love the concept of behind it. I too have a hard time with just grasping that much density right there, right on the road. So does that say a less density would be a better option? I, I don't necessarily know what that magic number is, but it is hard to see that much right there, right in the face.
We haven't had the chance to really discuss.
I know. This was thrown on you guys.
This part of town.
I know. We've been talking to Dave for months and we've kind of been on hold. Like, I know you guys are trying to figure it out. I want to paint just a little picture in your head right now. I mean, the reality is, is we have a major need for affordable housing. And what we tend to do is we tend to throw the people that need the, the lower income housing, which this is not low income housing. It's, you know, these are nice, very nice units. We tend to put the high density next to State Street and next to Walmarts and next to Costco's and, and whatever. Like what a fantastic opportunity for someone that can't afford a $400,000 townhome because they're getting there. And to be able to put them right here next to this river overlooking that and quality of life for someone that, that doesn't have money to buy a million dollar lot on the river. We're putting, you know, 250 people on the river instead of six.
Can you, can you go back to their plan for me, Mike?
So it's going to have like rent controls on that? So the rents won't go up so high? So some of the lower income people can get in it or?
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure we could talk about all sorts of different, honestly, we haven't got that far. We.
Because it would be a very nice place. And that would drive rent rates higher.
Yeah, you're, you're right. You're right. These will be more expensive than a similar condo or rental unit. You know, yeah, obviously, this is, this is fantastic. This property is beautiful. But they'd still be far more afford, you know, right now, a townhome's 350, 330, easy. I'm, Farmington, they're almost $500,000 for a townhome right now. And, you know, these are more in the probably 250 range. It's hard, hard to say that 250 is what affordable housing is nowadays, but that is about as affordable as, as we have.
I think, I think the thing, part of what I struggle with too is you're seeing all the green here and then it's just all white right here.
Yeah.
Not really understanding what, what are the fronts of these going to look like? What's the landscape going to look like?
That's going to be three stories too, I guess.
Yeah.
It's, it's four stories. With the podium, we, we put the parking underneath because, you know, to meet the, in order to meet the parking requirement and keep as much space open, it's actually pretty expensive to build that podium. But our entire thought process here was green or green. So it's not that like this has to be the exact design. Really what, what we're here, like, we realize that this is a very rudimentary sales pitch for you guys. We're just basically here to like, you know, to see if, if, if we could design something along this line and make it beautiful and make it something, you know, we're trying to see if this is something that we maybe could figure out how to get you guys behind it. And because that's what it takes, you know? And I appreciate the candor. If it's not, then we need to hear that too. But if we go back and put some work into this and figure out how to really make this an asset to the city, not just the people that live there, but to the entire city, then that's what we're looking for here, some direction. And then we go back and put that together and, and bring it back and see if we succeeded.
I think part of it just is to know, is it just going to be like a big thing right there in the middle of, like, we'd like to have marry with the development all along that area. And so I guess it's thinking about what's the vision for that corridor. And it also is thinking about what's happening with the River Bottoms. And the people to the south of there, we've just turned down flat and said, wait to see what happens with the River Bottoms, but mm. And so then we'd, if this is the kind of concept, then we'd have to revisit the other landowners in that area.
I understand that. We've kind of been looking at this, feeling like maybe we had a little bit of a window that maybe some others didn't because we were going with the general plan designation. I know you guys are working on some different changes and things. And, and so you may see that different, but that's kind of the window that we've been trying to chase here is like we are consistent with the general plan. The zoning is consistent, but also how can we stay consistent with what the general plan is, but also incorporate the ideas you guys are looking at for everything else? And, and see if there's a blend right now without, without putting this off. And, and, and really that's why we're here. We just want to, we're here to hear what you guys, you know, hear what you guys thinking about it.
I don't know why, but I, I'm a little different than these guys and I, it's something that I think is intriguing and would possibly consider, but I'm just one vote. And there's two other guys too.
The hesitation, another hesitation I have is because of some development was trying to get approved south of here. And the way we, we reacted to that, I, I, I need to have some talk and some thought process bounce back and forth between, between all of us on. Is it okay if we allowed it here, but we didn't there? Does it make sense to make those changes, you know?
I'm shocked that you don't have all those answers when you didn't even see this until like 30 seconds. In fact, you guys thought you got to go home right now and then Dave said, oh, by the way.
Steve always does that.
Yeah, we're used to that. As far as the, the park idea behind it, making use of that flood area, I think that's fantastic. I think that's a great idea. Again, it's, it's just trying to wrap my head around.
Sure.
I think part of my, my perspective is I was just in Boise this last weekend and they have a beautiful green belt.
Along the whole river.
That goes through a whole lot of different areas and they have some high-density housing that's really nice right next to the, right next to the river too. That doesn't detract from what's.
The way Boise has handled the Boise River is, I've never seen one like that. It's, the entire thing is a green belt and usable and it is fantastic. And, you know, they, I used to live there. They had like the parade floating down the river. It's like light, they're boats, but they're, they're lit up at night and they float them down the, it's really crazy. It's really awesome.
It's cool, all the different zones that that green belt goes through.
Our, our thoughts are, you know, I mean, if you look at that blue line, that's kind of, I'll have to get fancy here if I know how to push a button. That blue line right there, essentially, that's just a, that's a made up blue line, but essentially that's the tree line. So there's, this is just thick, thick wooded. And, but a lot of. And, but a lot of those trees are like dead or, you know, need some work. But, you know, envision, I mean, my thoughts are is we can go in there and thin those trees out and clean up the dead ones. And then we have a lot of really tall, amazing trees and, I mean, a ready-made park with a ton of shade and things like that. Our whole intention here after meeting with Dave so many times was, how can we make this river usable to the community? Not to one property owner, not to five property owners, not to even the, the owners of this property, but how can we make that an asset to the community?
Who would pay to maintain that area? Would it be the homeowners?
It's all negotiable at this point. I mean, yeah, I mean, totally negotiable on, on those types of things. I mean, we, we, our intention would be to come in and, and work with the city. Figure out what the city wants, figure out how to design that park in a way that's congruent with what the city wants. And then, and then contribute and work with the city to get the thing developed and, and, and made pretty.
What unit count? You've got it set to 20 in this example, but what, what makes it worth your while?
19.97. I honestly don't know. There's, there's a lot of variables here. For example, like, we don't, you know, you saw that flood plain comes out into here. And, and, you know, Dave and I have talked a little bit about that. That he doesn't necessarily love it when people raise that flood plain up. We've actually designed our parking in such a way that it wouldn't need to be raised up.
Your podium's probably above the flood plain.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. So our habitable space, we're, we're kind of looking at, that was one of the motivations for designing it that way was we, we keep from having to bring in a ton of fill and do crazy things like that. That was response to, you know, to our conversations with Dave. But I, so the, and the reality is, is depending on what that determination is, we don't even, this acres that we're calculating the density off is, is actually just kind of artificial. It's, it's, we did what, what you guys did on the map there and we chose the line, but reality is more engineering and stuff that need to take place to even figure out what is acceptable in that calculation. You know, maybe, maybe it's, I doubt it's going to be higher because we've kind of followed that line, but maybe it's lower. I, I don't know. I think really, really is, I mean, there's some things on this that don't work, like for example, that, that cul-de-sac's too long. We said, let's not worry about stuff like that. Let's just get it up in front of the commission and, and, and sell the vision that we have and see if that's a vision that the commission can see and can, and could possibly get behind. And if possibly get behind is, is, is where we leave after tonight, then we're going to go create that vision and make it real to you guys so that you know what you're, what we're actually talking about.
The thing that's different to me than with the developer to the south is the enhancement of the green belt trail area. But just having like that clunked right in the middle of other things that don't marry with it is my concern.
Yeah, it's hard for me because I know there's obviously a need for affordable housing. We're dealing with a huge crisis in the state right now. So we need stuff like this. But where else do we put it?
If not here, then where?
And if not this, then what? If, if this weren't to go there, are we fine with it just remaining open space the way it is? And is that fair to the property owner? So I don't know. A lot of questions still to, to be asked and answered.
But again, we're, we're held to the zoning that's there. Developers coming to us with an ask.
Yeah.
We don't have to, being fair to the property owner is, what's your zoning? If that's what you, that's what you own, not changing that.
Yeah, that's true.
But we are on the, we are talking about changing zoning and vision for river bottoms.
That's what we do all the time. But, yeah, but, and these guys have came with a benefit in my eyes. It's just, it doesn't outweigh what I, I, I don't see that as our attempt for this area.
The number of houses is way above what that zoning would include, so.
Michael, can you zoom in on the, on the data, on the project data? I can't, I think I've been reading that a little bit wrong.
I make a motion? Just kidding.
To zoom in.
I thought it'd be simple. Sorry, Mike.
There's essentially 15.5 acres.
Okay.
And 12.5 is what we're calling developable. That's minus that blue line around the, around the river, the tree line essentially. And then the open space is 7.35 acres.
So 256 units and that's 20 per acre off the 12.8.
Exactly.
Which honestly, I don't think they get there. And I think there's probably less than 12.5.
Yeah, I don't think there's a sum to that number.
I don't know exactly.
My sketch is 8.8.
So it might be more like, yeah.
5.8 acres in the black and then the, this area over here, it took out the blue.
That's it. But again, we had the other conversation tonight about, yeah, there's a pretty big range, right? The next to you is 20, is the top end of the range. We don't often hit the top end of the range, so.
We're always asked for that top end.
Another, it's funny how we, we start there always. Not to discourage my supporters.
No, no. And, and you know what? The, to answer the earlier question, like, we're not set on that 256 number per se. It's, it's a simple math of 20 times that acreage. We do, we do need to get enough density that we can justify buying an extra seven and a half acres and, and improving seven and a half acres, 7.35, I better not exaggerate, acres of ground. Well, you know, if I'm doing it there, maybe it's somewhere else. Keep my integrity here, because I'm a developer and you know, we're kind of.
We're holding you to it.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, so we, we do need to get enough units to call, because we're still buying all that ground. Essentially, we're buying that ground and then we're not, you know, we're turning it in. And, and then we're coming in and putting grass and sprinklers and pavilions and, and picnic tables and trails and whatnot. So, you know, I mean, to, to ignore the economics would be too simplified, but also like, that's not the only reason we're here. I mean, we're not here to, we're, we're not trying to, to throw down an asphalt pad next to the river. We're trying to, to keep that in mind.
And it's really not even, not even that. It's like, even if it were just single family homes, you still had the park behind, but then you put single family homes next to, next to Main Street. Would I want that? I don't know.
You probably wouldn't want to, want to for your own home on Main Street. Maybe you would on the river.
Yeah.
But if, if there's single family homes in here, what's going to happen is those lots are going to back right up to that river. And there's going to be six or eight or 10 or whatever people back that river that are going to have a heck of a lot. And they're going to love it because they live on the river, but everyone else in Spanish Fork can't go there. And that's what we're trying to avoid. And essentially, I mean, you guys are intelligent. The economics of it require, in order to leave that open requires density somewhere.
Yes.
Unless you can convince the property owner that I'm still a seven and a half acres and just give it to you, then it's easy. Nope, see? No, I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
So what are you looking for?
I don't know. What are we looking for, Dave?
Right, we've got several different opinions about this, so what, what makes sense to do next?
One thing is, I, I want to make sure if everybody's, when you're giving the feedback, there's, there's real money goes into.
The next step.
Exactly.
So I mean, if it's something that we have, you have heartburn over, I don't sugarcoat your comments.
Yeah.
That they want to hear before they drop a hundred thousand dollars on a set of plans, what's going on.
I don't think I, yeah, I think I'm with Todd when, when I look at that area. You know, river bottoms, our vision, everything else, what we've already said directly south of this property. I don't think I would be able to support this down the road. I love the concept of, of bringing in more housing. I just don't think, I don't think this is where, where it makes sense.
And what I feel bad about is I can't, like Mike said, I don't know where I can, I can't point you in the right direction. Until I know what resolution the city comes to on this, I really can't. I wish I could say I can get behind this over here.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is.
This is still like a put a pin in it and we would need to talk about it more. Like, it's great for you to come and for us to know what the possibilities are, but.
And we could sit and talk more and more and more in, in future meetings. I still think the end result for me would be no for this.
And, and when, when you say that, is that because the river bottoms area has, plan hasn't been settled on? Or there's something that you envision that's a better use for this property or what's the?
Nothing I envision. Part, partly because I know that area very well. There's a little bit of serenity as you take the trail right there. I don't know how having a high amount of density would change that. So that's part of it. I, I appreciate that you're trying to preserve that with the park on the backside. That's not going to hide the fact that you've got four story buildings in front of that park. I do have concerns about that much density and, and I'm not an engineer, but being that close to the river and the flood plain, I don't know how that plays out. So I would have some, some significant, significant concerns with, with those size of buildings that close to the river.
So if we were to come back with like smaller buildings, less density, is that something that moves you in a different direction a little bit possibly? Or, you know, like, like 260 units, if we were to come back with 200 units, is that something that maybe changes your thought process there? Or is it still gets you to the same place?
I think in the end result for me is the same place. Just the, the residential in general. That's why I say if they were single family homes, would I feel any different? I don't think I would. I think just residential in that area specifically, I have a hard time with.
Gotcha. Okay, I appreciate the candor.
Yeah, it's a concept that I, I think ultimately I have a hard time with. The density, the size of the buildings, butted up against Main Street. You know, it's a big corridor down Main Street. All of a sudden you're hitting four story buildings. It's a lot. I may differ a little bit. I think if you bring some of that density down, I might be a little bit more prone to the idea. But I don't, again, I, I think it's hard for me to say, hey, this is the magic eight ball number that you would need to get to if you're just bringing down 200. I just still don't know that I would be there. I think it's a lot lower, but like you said, there has to be that financial difference. And so, right now, it wouldn't be a concept I could get behind.
I think it's cool, but I obviously probably need to, I mean, I do think that it's a, I think it's a conversation that needs a pin in it till everything's fleshed out with the river bottoms too.
Thanks for your input tonight. That's really what we're.
My name's Jeff Knighton. I'm the architect and planner working with Mike. Good to be here. I'm missing, I'm on the Senior Planning Commission meeting. So I've missed that to be here tonight with you guys. But I just want to point out, one of the things that we run into in a lot of these multifamily projects is traffic. Right? The concern of what the traffic's going to generate into single family neighborhoods or around single family neighborhoods. And I think that's one of the real opportunities here is, you know, I've heard the comments, we're on a major corridor. And that's, I think, actually maybe a benefit in this case, is that we are on a major circulation corridor as far as the traffic goes. It's coming right out on the Main Street. It's not filtering out into other residential neighborhoods. And so you have the density, but we're, we're buffered from the single family neighborhoods, which is where you hit a lot of the, the problems and the pushback and create a lot of heartache, you know, for people and communities when you, when you're building that density next to single family. So I just wanted to make that point.
I like that. I, I agree 100% in the fact that you're not around other residential is, is definitely a plus. I mentioned that earlier. One concern that I haven't said, that I have with this being next to Main Street is as development continues to grow south of Spanish Fork, our Main Street's getting busier and busier and busier. And I don't know what that would look like if I lived in this place and I needed to go south and had to turn left to get onto Main Street. There's some times during the day where it's pretty, pretty busy. That's why they widened it the way they did. Maybe it wouldn't be, maybe it wouldn't be a problem. I don't know.
You'd have to apply for a signal for you guys.
Okay, and, and.
Spacing works generally. It's about the same distance from the Wendy's they are ahead to then this one.
So there would be a signal.
But spacing wise, there, it'd be a similar spacing, so I don't think it's an unreasonable.
So, so if that were to be the case, then yeah, that would resolve one of my issues, one of my concerns, if there were a signal there. But without a signal, I would be concerned for safety of the people turning in and out of that residential area. Any other thoughts, comments for these guys?
Thanks for your time tonight. We really appreciate it. We'll, we'll probably go sit down with Dave and talk to him about tonight and we'll amongst ourselves and, and see where we go from here. But thanks for your time. I know it's late. We'll see you next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We decided on the 27th, right? Thursday the 27th?
Yeah.
Work session?
Yeah. Anything else before we adjourn?
Anything in particular you want to have on that agenda, if it comes to mind?
Status of river bottoms.
Apparently there's two options we can look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, apparently we went to five to two, so.
Narrow that down, yes.
Might be a one real soon.
Dave's trees. Did you guys talk about trees last time when, after I left?
We did.
Oh.
All right. So SFBN can turn off. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, we've adjourned.